First off, we have a public hearing. Do I like to open the public hearing? Brenda?
Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, I'd like to announce that the public consultation and public hearing for the OCP and zoning amendment bylaw number 4205 and 4206 have been rescheduled to Monday, October 6th at 8:30 a.m. This is the 151 acre quarter section owned by Wayne and Kerry Hansen located on the west side of the city at the intersection of Highway 97 and the Dangerous Goods Route. Due to a publication error, the city was unable to meet legislated notice requirements, and therefore, the city will provide another notification period and reissue the notices to the surrounding property owners. And there are two other rezoning bylaw amendments moving forward today. The first rezoning bylaw, number 4236, proposes to rezone the property located at 1501 100th Avenue from C4 Commercial Service Zone to RS2 Residential Single and Duplex Zone. I also need to point out that although the wording in the bylaw was correct, the map that was attached to the bylaw showed that the proposed zoning to be RS1 instead of RS2. The map has since been corrected in the bylaw, and council will be able to consider third reading as amended in today's regular meeting.
Thank you, Brenda.
And the second rezoning bylaw, number 4238, proposes to rezone the property located at 505 and 601 on 116th Avenue from C4 Commercial Service Zone to C2 Commercial General Zone. And there were no responses received for any of those.
Thank you. And do we have any correspondence or delegations?
None.
Thank you. So I'll call for a first time. Is there any comments in regards to either of those zoning changes? Counselor McFadden?
I just have a question. What's the difference between, on the last one, the C, C general to, what was that again?
C4 to C2.
Yeah, what's the difference in the, what would it permit that's not permitted now if that were to be successful?
I, I do have those listed, so I wouldn't be able to tell you right off the difference.
That's fine, no, I was just curious.
Kevin might be able to.
C2 is a broader zone.
I do have both here, if you'd want to...
We'll provide them to you.
That's fine, thank you. I didn't mean to belay things, I was just curious.
Sure. For a second time, is there any comments? And for a third time, do we have any comments? Thank you. And so at this time, I will close the public hearing. So good morning, everyone. We're order, September 15th, 2014. Great to be back into our regular routine and get back into our schedule for fall. First off, new counselor business, Counselor Wilbur.
Thank you. So we're a little off Fall Fair, but I really, first off, want to thank everybody, all the staff that participated. It was fun, and it was exciting to see all the concepts I came up with for their seed bags. The judge's favorite was actually the Public Works bag, which was titled Wild Oats, so we'll give them credit for that. And I don't think anything could beat the kids' expression on their face when that new snow blower came down the, down the street, so that was really good. And it was Cheryl and Duncan were there to throw candy, and I think we put on some aisles. Duncan had a friend from Australia.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, so that helped out. And it was really, it was great. And so we did win first place, and David Johnson and Daricee just walked in, and they were going to present you with the ribbon. So they came to participate from Society for Community Living, and they held our city banner for our float.
Awesome.
Put your coffee down, David.
All right. David Johnson. On behalf of all of us who would like to connect you with the first place ribbon 71 in the Fall Fair Parade. So we really appreciate your guys' participation, obviously, in helping us with the parade and the float. It's an, it's an amazing event for our community in terms of having that parade, and a great, great opportunity for everyone to join in. We really appreciate you guys stepping in and helping us as the city celebrate that event. And I love getting the parades, well, first place ribbon. So thank you, guys. You're welcome. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Go ahead.
And I just, I had a little bit of housekeeping to do over the summer, so I just want to say the fire department did get their peach pie for being the biggest supporter for our relay team, their 50-50 draw. So thanks to them, and they were deep dish pies, I'm sure they looked good.
Thank you. Any other new counselor business? So we'll move on to item three, minutes. Our minutes for a regular meeting of council August 18th for adoption. Counselor Schuman, Counselor McFadden, were there any errors or omissions in the minutes? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. Is there any business arising from the minutes? Correspondents? We have item 51. Counselor Malkinson?
I move that we receive this invitation to meet at UMBCM from Selena Robinson for information, your worship.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Schuman. Discussion. Counselor McFadden?
I actually wouldn't mind maybe a meeting with these folks. They do have, one of the issues they've raised is the level of ambulance service in the north, and that's something that does concern me. So I don't know if I need permission from council to arrange a meeting, or just, just go ahead and do it. Seek your advice on that.
So I would think we would need an approval of council if we're meeting as a request, and I'm going to seek, Jim, your...
A resolution would be the cleanest, your worship, and then we'll try to set up a meeting for whichever counselors are interested.
So now we do have a motion to receive for information. Counselor Schuman?
So would it not be more appropriate to meet with the minister responsible rather than the critic?
Oh, I don't know, I just, we got the letter, I thought, well...
Like be with the government instead of the critic?
Yeah, well, either or. I just thought it would be interesting to get their point of view, that's all. It's not, it's not a dealmaker either way.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Our delegations are at nine o'clock, so we're going to move through to our reports. Item 71, we have a report from the Chief Administrative Officer regarding the Royal Canadian Legion lease request. Counselor Wilbur?
I will make the motion that report number 14-191 from the Chief Administrative Officer regarding the Royal Canadian Legion lease request to be received. Further, that the staff be directed to enter into a lease agreement between the City of Dawson Creek and the Royal Canadian Legion for the requested space in the youth care center. Further, that the annual lease rate be set at $8,190 plus taxes. Further, that the term be set for three years, commencing September 15th, 2014, and ending on August 31st, 2017.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor McFadden. Have we had any conversations, or if I can, through to Jim, have we had any conversations with the Legion in regards to their capacity at all? Was that a consideration for them?
Through your worship, we had advised Mr. Roberts of what the recommendation was going to be. I think he reserved the right to later attend council and ask for some waiver of the lease fees, but they are certainly interested in the space.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item 7.2, we have a report from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. Counselor Schuman?
I move report number 14-189 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the Loyzelle Investments Limited ALR exclusion, exclusion application be received for information.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Wilbur. Discussion. Counselor Malkinson?
Your worship, I noted in the report that, well, maybe if I just see here, the extension of services to this parcel be very costly, if feasible at all. I'm wondering if there's, if my memory is serving me correctly, and whether there's actually a requirement to build the rail yard that's proposed on this property, or whether it can be used for any of the purposes that its eventual required zoning would allow.
Through your worship, this parcel is in the Peace River Regional District, so it's outside our zoning jurisdiction.
Yeah, I apologize.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item 7.3, we have a report from Deputy Director of Corporate Administration regarding our meeting schedule. Counselor Wilbur?
I make motion report number 14-193 from the Deputy Director of Corporate Administration regarding the 2015 council meeting schedule be received, and further that council adopt the proposed 2015 council meeting schedule.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Schuman. Discussion. Counselor Schuman?
I just have one thing. On the bottom, it lists off LGLA, NCLGA, FCM, et cetera, et cetera. And we've got NCLGA happening in Prince George on February 4th of '6, which I don't believe is correct. It is actually May 6 to 8. So that's just a little typo, obviously.
About the month, which was created?
Oh. So, but we don't have NCLGA listed then for May.
I'm...
NCLGA is due...
It should be in May, yeah.
In Prince George.
Yeah.
Yep.
So we'll get that added in for council. Counselor Parslawn?
Yes, staff also presented an option two, which, the difference between option one and option two is that option one has three meetings in March. Option two, two meetings in March. Two meetings is the norm, so I am wondering why we adopt in option one when there's another option that keeps that twice-a-month meeting pattern going.
Brenda?
I'll respond to that through your worship. The procedure bylaw does speak to a meeting every other week, so that's why the first option was for every other week. And there are quite a few months that we do have an option for three meetings a month, but some of those have holidays, and that's why, that's the only reason we would not have that meeting is due to a holiday or conference of council.
Thank you. Did that answer it for you, Counselor Parslawn?
Yeah, I'm, well, I'm, I'm just asking if we have sufficient business in the month of March for, I mean, it's hard to predict, but just what is the pattern? Do we need three meetings in March rather than two?
Counselor Schuman?
I just see this as an opportunity to maybe not have a special meeting that month. It seems like we do incur a lot of special meetings, so I see no problem with three meetings in the month of March.
Further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item 7.4, we have a report from the Deputy Director of Infrastructure in regards to the Kiskatna watershed designation. Counselor Parslawn?
Yes, that, I'd like to move the report number 14-194 from the Deputy Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, where the Kiskatna watershed designation be received. Further, that mayor and council advocate for the Kiskatna watershed designation at UBCM in September.
Thank you. Second, Counselor Wilbur. Discussion.
Just like to speak to the, of course, attached to this is, is a, a report that is somewhat, well, it's very thorough and somewhat alarming about all the potential issues that we could face with contamination of our watershed. And I think it's, this is long overdue. I really just can't fathom in my head how we're so dependent upon this water that it's not in any way, we, we can't be proactive in dealing with issues that may come along. We have to rely on others to inform us, and having this designation will give us far more, what's the word, a greater stand, opportunity of being proactive in managing a watershed for the community. So I think this is a vitally important piece of work.
Thank you. And certainly, we're going to have some conversation later today in our agenda under the committee at the whole, and so I think it's absolutely appropriate that we do, as indicated, ensure we follow this up. We, we did write to the minister and all of the various agencies in, I think it was March or April, with respect to ensuring we move forward with this designation of the watershed. I did speak verbally with Paul Gekins, the CEO of the Oil and Gas Commission, I'm going to say a couple months ago, maybe, and he was absolutely on side with the concept of understanding why it was such an important aspect for our community to ensure that we try to move forward with that designation, and was very supportive of the concept. So I think the aspect for us is just continually to work with the Minister of Forestlands Natural Resources to ensure that we, we move this forward to get this designation completed for the future of our community as it relates to our water, so completely on side with that. Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item eight, we're going to go into our bylaws. Zoning Amendment Bylaw Number 4236. Move that, your worship. Moved by Counselor Malkinson. Seconded, Counselor Schuman. Discussion. Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item 8.2, zoning amendment bylaw 4238. Counselor Schuman. Seconded, Counselor Kenny. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Let me do that again. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Too fast, sorry. That was close to an opposed. Item 8.3, we have a smoking regulation bylaw number 4240 for consideration. Counselor Kenny?
I'll move that.
Move? Sorry. Brenda?
Through your worship, I'm wondering if we want to refer this until after the delegation?
Until after the delegation?
Yeah.
Okay. So maybe that's, sorry, I should have done that. We have a delegation here appearing at nine o'clock, and so we'll defer a three until that time. Coffee time? No, it's not coffee time.
Mayor's business.
Mayor's business, yeah. It's, yeah. My first item I wanted to bring forward is the 2015 Energy Conference, and as we learned recently that Fort Nelson Energy Expo was canceled this year and as planned for in September because of a lack of participation, people registering to engage in the conferences. And we've heard this a little bit in the past about the decline in the interest by both industry and service. So it is our conference for 2015, and so I thought it was appropriate based on what we did from, unheard and saw from Fort Nelson, that we have that discussion maybe now because we've got to put the plans in place if we are hosting it, to move forward with it. We did give that indication to administration that we were going to host the 2015 and allocated that component for it, but, you know, with the results of the Fort Nelson Conference, I thought it was something we should bring back. I did engage some, as a side to this, I did engage with some of the industry people that were here this summer for the exhibition and rodeo, and, you know, that event that brings in so many people into our community at that time, and I had asked this industry rep in terms of how do we, how could we maximize that event in terms of the participation from, we see it from all kinds of different folks, business and industry that are here, and it was this individual suggestion that we take the opportunity, because those people are in town, to use it as an opportunity to engage perhaps a half-day session on the month, Tuesday or the Wednesday of the beginning of the rodeo for a economic, industry, business development opportunity to engage in a bit of a half-day session with industry to talk about the economic development opportunities that are occurring in our community. And, you know, it might be very appropriate next year, depending on what happens this fall with the provincial government as they finalize the royalty decisions in terms of the impact to the natural gas industry. And if that happens, the final investment decisions will probably be in place over the winter, either they're moving ahead or they're not. So maybe, and I'm just suggesting that as an opportunity for us to maybe consider arranging for a half-day session with our business community, keep it local, and engage the industry and companies that are coming in to have that as an opportunity to, rather than a full-fledged energy conference, but to do it much more in a, almost a parochial perspective that we just engage the local business community with industry. So I throw that out, and I guess I'm hesitant now in terms of seeing, I don't want to go, us to go to a ton of work and effort and allocate the dough for it and then see what happened to Fort Nelson. So I throw that out for conversation to you guys. Counselor Parslawn?
Well, I wasn't surprised of it, Fort Nelson, what happened at Fort Nelson when we talked about this, you know, from my friends in the oil and gas industry, there seems to be such a large number of conferences for people to attend, that there must be some exhaustion in attendance at these conferences. So unless there's something very special that would attract people, I can't see us facing a different reality than what Fort Nelson. I like what you're saying, though, with your idea, and I would personally, if you, if you feel you need a motion about that, but I would support using that opportunity that you just described, so that can be some discussion, something that's less onerous in planning as well.
Sure. Okay. Counselor Kenny?
I, I agree too with that, that plan. I think if we kind of narrowed it down a little bit more, because when you're planning a, the energy conference, you're planning banquets and receptions and all the, and that was all there to, to nurture relationships with industry and with business, and it was really needed, you know, a few years back. But we're, we're there now. We know who to talk to in industry, they're communicating, they're communicating with us, and so, you know, I think that relaying that to local business, I think they'd be more inclined to come, more of the local business would be inclined to come, because the larger conference sometimes, I think, intimidates, or they think, oh, I just don't have, I don't have time to dedicate three days to a conference. So I think that's a pretty, I think it's time.
The individual I spoke to, and he was the senior VP of one of the industries, said, you know what, you'll, you'll get, because their rodeo and the exhibition has such a high profile, and they like attending that, he said, you'll get the major companies, you'll get the CEOs coming, because if they're coming for a specific purpose, then they can tailor that in to the visit, so...
That's a great idea.
Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, I like that idea also. I think also that we should really try to attend the provincial natural gas LNG type of conference ourselves. I mean, there's important things that we need to relate to, not just the, the major players, but to government and such also. And in the past, the Energy Conference was a little bit of an opportunity for that. We would have some of our government in the room and able to speak about some of the issues, so...
Yeah, I agree.
That it would be important for us to attend those kind of things.
I know that Counselor McFadden and I attended the LNG conference. It was unbelievable how good that was, and we were at the natural gas conference as well, and so I think that's a, we need to ensure that we continue, because we were, Mayor Ackerman, Mayor Streper and I were asked to speak at the natural gas conference, and we're starting to develop that kind of a reputation, a profile in the industry, and so they're engaging us to attend, and so I think it's important that we prioritize those for all of us to ensure that we have those as attendance opportunities for us. All right, so we need to, I think we do need to make a motion, perhaps at this point, to give the direction to administration on the 2015 Energy Conference, because I think we do have a motion on, Jim?
Yes, I'm positively directed to prepare for that conference, unless you change that, we'll go ahead and prepare for the conference.
All right, so we need a motion, then, if we're going to change that direction. Counselor Schuman?
So I move that we cancel or not move forward with our 2015 Energy Conference, and that we look into proposing a session in August around Fall Fair time. I did note in, further down the agenda, that Connie's talking about starting some stuff with the Fall Fair, like on Tuesday even, so I think that would work out well.
Yeah, we'll have to manage that, so...
Yeah, so, yeah, investigation and...
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor McFadden. Discussion. Counselor Wilbur?
I just think, given something that Counselor Schuman touched on, is it wouldn't hurt to extend that invitation to some ministers and stuff to also come up and attend, and that would also give us the opportunity to show them what else we're about.
Yeah, we'll start to put that together now in terms of if we have the decision of council and start to put some of that fundamentals in place in who we're going to do, when, how, who, some of that stuff. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Next one kind of ties into that a little bit, and we, so we, one of our strategic priorities was to really get the economic development strategy underway. We had the meeting with the BC Economic Development folks come in and give us a one-day session. And for me, it's about capacity right now in terms of having the ability to keep up to, some of the things that we've got going on, not only for ourselves but for administration. And we don't have anybody to lead this right now in terms of the follow-up work, in terms of putting it together, and so I needed to bring it back, because I need to understand, if we're going to carry forward with this, we're going, I'm going to need to have, we're going to need to put some support in place to get it done and move forward with some next steps in it, and put some parameters around what that work. And so I wanted to bring it back to you guys, obviously, because right now with water and all of the, there's a, we've got a ton of things going on, and it's just the capacity to keep up to those four or five, we're completing the sewer project, we're into the Calvin Crook Centers, completed, so it's, just to me, right now, it's just the capacity to keep up to it, so I wanted to bring it back and say, if we're going to go, we've got to have some, we've got to put some support in place, and we never put a budget to it in terms of, that I, that I know of, for economic development. Counselor McFadden?
Well, that's what I was wondering, your worship. I think we need to put this topic into the budget discussion later this fall, and if council wants to, we could fund something at that time, but until there's some resources, there's not much use in going forward.
Counselor Schuman?
So to me, that means we would be delaying it quite a bit further, like is, is it really this fall that we'll be starting our budget, or is it more like...
Well, we're going to get in the next six weeks or eight weeks, we're going to be into the election, and it's just the capacity for everybody to kind of grab a hold of it, and we didn't put a budget to it, and that's my concern. I don't, we don't have that support mechanism in place within, internally, and/or if we, if we're going to engage somebody to do it for us, we've got to allocate some dough for it, so... Counselor Schuman, go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to see us put some resources to this, whether that be to hire someone, or, you know, I'm not, you know, I don't exactly, if we have the resources to put to it, and I don't know if that's what everybody wants, is to have a staff person responsible for that, or, or not.
My worry is for council, we've got the Residential Development Committee cooking along, we've got to get that finished within the next month or two, and I guess I'm just worried about the capacity of all of us to be able to do it, and so, does it make more sense to put it forward to our strategic exercise at the beginning of the year? Continue to see if it is a priority for us, and then put that priority, just to put the priority to it for us in terms of ensuring that we move it forward, and then allocate the parameters around the business plan that we have for it, and the financial resources to it. I just, I just, I'm feeling like we're going to struggle trying to, and I don't want to push it to get it done, just for the sake of getting it done, without putting the diligence towards it. Rather get it done right than get it done fast. Counselor Parslawn?
Yeah, I must have lost track in what you're asking for here, so bear with me.
That's easy to happen.
As it relates to money matters, I, I, I'm not willing to vote for anything that involves the expenditure of money until I have a clear written report on the deliverables, and we also look at all the other things that we're doing in economic development. So, but in fairness to you, maybe, this is why I'm worried about, have I missed something here? Is there some specific task that's up, coming up? Is there some specific task that's up, coming up that requires resourcing? And if so, could we have that in writing, and what are the deliverables? Because unless we, I just don't want to approve expenditures of funds that are not in the budget without a comprehensive report and a comprehensive discussion about it.
And that's my point, I think I just, if I didn't make it clear, we just haven't put the parameters around the outcomes, the deliverables of economic development from that strategic priority, and until we do that, I don't want to keep running it forward without having the capacity and that in front, so. Councilor Kenny?
Yeah, I agree that we do need some deliverables, and that's going to take time as well. And nothing really, like when we had the session with the Economic Development Association of B.C., we never really had anything, you know, come from that, other than educating on what, you know, on interpretations of economic development. So we still need that kind of, you know, SWOT analysis on what kind of deliverables would, that we would need. I also think, you know, with the mayor's coalition, there's going to be information coming from that as far as environmental scans on, on industry and employment and housing, all that's going to come into play with that mayor's coalition. So there's going to be some pretty valuable information that, that the city will be able to use in, in planning for the future. So there's a few things on the go, but I still think that we need to, you know, have some direction, and I agree that it's way too busy right now, it's too crazy.
Thank you.
And that's me saying that.
Thank you. So, Councilor Malkinson?
That's, I thank Councilor Kenny for her words. That's the point in the process that I had thought that we were at. We had received, you know, we had had this workshop and received the information on some of the functions of economic development, and I'm not certain whether we were at a decision-making point, or whether we were waiting for possibly some deliverables or an application of that in order for us to decide whether or not to move ahead, because I believe that that was the priority, as it was named in our strategic priorities chart, to determine whether or not to have an economic development function for the community.
I was feeling that accountability as a strategic priority for the community, and so as we've gone through the year, and we've got the sewer trunk line, we've got Calvin Crook, we've got the Shore Water, we've got the, the economic development, we've got the Residential Development Committee, so then we've got a ton of things going on, and I'm not in the least bit unhappy about that in terms of where we're at. I'm just saying, I think we're running out of time and the capacity to deliver on this, and I think it's best to move it forward to January when we've got new council in place. Thanks. So that was, I just kind of wanted to raise it on that basis, I wasn't looking for anything further from that, so.
Just, just from my memory, Your Worship, I'm curious, is that the point in the process that we were at right now? We had received this workshop and no further action's been taken since then?
Yeah.
Has council received a report on, on some of the findings of that workshop, or have there been any decision points or changes since then?
We had no, we had no ask from that workshop that we did, it was more an information workshop for us to inform and guide and provide counsel with a bit of an overview of economic development as it relates. I still think it's a huge bit of work that we need to engage in at some point, it's too critical for our community, but it's just the capacity right now to be able to, for me, to engage, and I've taken that accountability from the direction of council, right? Councilor Schuman?
So we're on the subject of strategic planning right at this moment.
Nice to segue in there.
I'm wondering what we've got set up for strategic planning, and I have to say that I wasn't completely enthused with the process last time. I don't know how others feel about that. I can speak from experience, the process that we had undertaken the years prior to last year, I did get a lot more out of those sessions than I did last year. I felt we were more on the same page with staff, et cetera, et cetera, from the previous processes, so I'm wondering what we do have set up for our strategic planning in January, and if there's a conversation that we can have about that.
We'll bring it forward, and I will be bringing it forward to you guys back in terms of what we should be planning for 2015. Again, we'll get that started early. The 2014 for me was obviously just getting elected and trying to not get into a full, almost review of vision, mission, strategic objectives, the pillars, but, and so I think we need to do that in a fully engaged process, and so we'll bring that back to council and start to set some timelines in place for the new council in 2015 to do that. So, thank you. I'll, I'm going to take that under advisement for our economic development strategy. I'm going to just quickly close off, because we're past time. The community video, I met with Hank the other day, we had approved the redoing the community video. Hank's been working on it, Hank Bridgman has been working on it. He lost some time this summer, obviously with the smoke, in terms of trying to update the video with some summertime stuff. He's got an end date of that contract for the end of October as part of the agreement we made to have it completed by, and, and so he's worried about the completion timeframe in terms of being able to get it done because of that summertime smoke, they didn't get some of the community shots that he had hoped to, and so he's working away now on the fall and trying to catch up. But I just wanted to give you guys a heads up, I may be bringing it back in the next few weeks with Hank to say we may need to extend that timeframe if councils will. But just, like I say, it was just a concern for him in terms of getting the summertime stuff. So, thank you. We're going to, that kind of got us over time a little bit, so we're going to go back into our agenda for our delegations now, and our first delegation, item 6.00, delegation from the South Peace Community Resources Society in regards to proclamation for Take Back the Night. Good morning. How are you guys? I'm the bugger, right?
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good.
Good to see you guys. Good morning. Nothing like a morning hug.
From the poor ladies.
From the poor ladies. Come in, let's all read the proclamation for you. So whereas safety for women continues to be a concern on the streets of Dawson Creek and around the world, and whereas freedom of movement on city streets without fear of violence is a fundamental right that must be protected, and whereas it is important that we take action that makes our community safe for women of all ages, races, marital status, and sexual identity, that our streets are safe for women during the day and in the evening, and that no area is less safe than other areas. Now therefore I do hereby proclaim the evening of September 24th, 2014 as Take Back the Night in Dawson Creek. There you go.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So you guys are welcome to give your overview of.
Certainly.
So, for at least the last 16 years, South Peace Community Resources Society has very proudly hosted an event called Take Back the Night. This is an event that acknowledges the fact that even in the 21st century, in our streets, in our community, in our alleyways, and in our parks, we still have members of our community with a focus on sexualized and sexual violence against women, we have members of our community feeling unsafe in those public areas. So what we will be doing this year is we will be meeting at the seniors' hall at 6:30 on the 24th of September, 6:30 P.M., and we will be proceeding to march with signs and chanting, and we will end up at the Nowak and Friendship Center, where we will be having a gathering and a celebration of that acknowledgement and, and our, our promise that, that we are taking back this night, and it is unacceptable to us as a community not to be safe in our public areas. Barring any questions, those are my submissions. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Any questions? Thank you. I think the 24th is, are we, we're over?
We're over.
We're gone.
So we wish you a wonderful.
So we hope to have a great evening, and our apologies that our schedule and the conflict with UBCM meetings, and of course we won't, we won't be able to attend, and pray you will be there in spirit.
You will be there in spirit. Thank you so much. Thank you, it's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Our next delegation is Brenda Kreitzer from the Dawson Creek Beautification Committee and Barry Reynard from Director of Community Services in attendance regarding the proclamation of September 21st, 2014 as International Day of Peace. Good morning. How are you? Come on, Brenda, come on. You have to, come on. Good to see you. How are you guys?
Fine, Paulie.
Good morning. Come on. I'm going to read the proclamation for you. Whereas the issue of peace embraces the deepest hopes of all people and remains humanity's guiding inspiration, and whereas in 1981, the United Nations proclaimed the International Day of Peace be devoted to commemorating and strengthening the ideals of peace both within and among all nations and peoples, and whereas there is a growing support within our city for the observance of the International Day of Peace, which affirms a vision of the world, of our world at peace, and fosters cooperation between individuals, organizations, and nations. Now therefore I do hereby proclaim September 21st, 2014 as International Day of Peace in Dawson Creek, and encourage all governments, organizations, schools, places of worship, and residents in and around the community to commemorate the International Day of Peace. There you go, Brenda.
Good.
Thank you.
So I would just like to extend an invitation from the Dawson Creek Beautification Committee and the City of Dawson Creek to invite the citizens of Dawson Creek to Walk for Peace. Each year, the International Day of Peace is observed around the world on the 21st of September. This is a day devoted to strengthening the ideals of peace both within and among all nations and people. The theme this year is the right of peoples to peace. The Dawson Creek Beautification Committee will also be dedicating the human sundial in Edna McPhail's memory. We will all meet at the seniors' hall parking lot at 1:00 P.M. and walk for peace to the Peace Park, where there will be a short ceremony in the park. You may wear your ethnic dress to represent our diverse heritage. After this ceremony, there will be refreshments at the seniors' hall. Please come to celebrate with us the Walk for Peace and the dedication of the human sundial. So we are inviting all different groups. These are the suns of Norway, and we're talking, we're sending out invitations to hopefully the Sedatians, and that they will all show up and wear their ethnic outfits, which is, which would be really nice. Yeah, so we hope you'll all be able to come.
And that is on September 21st?
September 21st.
Right, and we're just walking from the seniors' hall to the Peace Park. A few years ago, quite a few years ago, actually, we did it from the NAR station to the Peace Park, but that's a long walk, so, yeah, so we decided that.
Sounds lovely, so it sounds like we're out of town.
Yeah, we're out of town.
Yes, always.
So we reach out to a couple of councils that aren't, will be attending, and hopefully one of them will be able to attend. So I, to me, the Dawson Creek Beautification Committee and the, I think it's?
Reported to the city.
Yeah, but when did it start? When did the beautification committee start?
1991.
Was it?
Yeah.
Anyway, I always remember Edna's focus in leading that, and we were out there doing the planting beds, putting the trees, and we see the effects and the results of that today in our community in terms of the focus that was put towards that and the planning of these things. So I think it's an amazing tribute to be able to see the dial, sundial be dedicated at, I think it's great, your guys' support.
Just to point out, Dale only showed up once.
That was enough.
And they probably run a record.
Yeah, she did make a comment about that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You probably couldn't even, couldn't keep up for weeks after that.
You did such a good job, you didn't need to come back, did you? I was so tired, I couldn't move. So, next up are item 6.3. We have Dan Bastianson, Dave Robertson, Walter Shane, the South Peace Historical Society in attendance regarding the future vision of our historical society. So, good morning.
Good morning. As an old teacher, come with a handout. I don't intend to read it all.
Thank you.
Don't think we have that much time. I don't think it's necessary.
As my old English literature teacher, I'm assuming I'm going to get homework as a result of this. I end up having to.
Walter was your teacher.
Yeah, he was my English literature.
It's just passed a law forbidding homework at elementary schools.
There will be a quiz on it. So maybe while Walter's having his own, I can get started.
All I want to say, one thing, the top of it says, if you don't know, it's not a slogan of anybody's intelligence. I thought I knew until I spent a week at the National Archives in Ottawa. My eyes were open.
Walter, have you got one?
Oh.
You want one?
He said he wasn't going to read it.
We will, you don't have to. But we're excited about our new space, that's really why we're here, is to touch base with city council in regards to the new archives, and to talk a little bit about our current situation, where we're at now, and both in where we are in a good manner, and also where some of our challenges lie. I think, just to clear the air more than anything, and to make sure that everybody's on the same page, the, I don't know if Walter wants to speak to you a little bit about what archives are, that's the handout that's there, and I don't know if we should get entirely into everything, but, but really, I guess it's important to understand the importance of what the South Peace Historical Society Archives does or provides as far as a service to the community, as to a history, as to why we're where we are. We've been a part of the community for quite some time, and we've been in discussions with the community, or with the city in particular, for about 10 years for new archives based upon where we're at. Jump in anytime, Walter, if I need correction, but.
Yeah, we started in the, in the RCMP lockup, when they moved into the new building, that's where the stuff was, and it's been moved several times to where it is now.
So currently, we're in the, we have been up until just now, just recently, in the Lavery Annex Building, a building which has been degrading. So now we're into that new space, which I'm sure all of you have had a chance to tour, and hopefully you were able to step into the archives and, and see what we've managed to be able to do in about the one-week window we had for our move-in. It's been a bit hectic this summer, definitely has been hectic for us getting into that space, and there's been definitely some surprises along the way. One of those surprises being that K-PAC has requested funds from the Historical Society as part of that space, as rent for that space. In all of our discussions up to this point in time with the city, we hadn't, hadn't been presented with that, so certainly we don't have a budget, hadn't had a budget for that. It's $500 is what they've requested, which is quite reasonable for that space, if you've all seen, just at this stage, again, that was brought up in July to us with the move-in date at the end of the summer, and as a volunteer organization, to come up with those funds out of nothing overnight is, has been difficult. As far as our future goals for that space, it is to be a part of what's going on there. The Calvin Crook Center is, is a wonderful community space, and we're excited to be a part of that where we can share our goals, which are to share history and really what went on in this community. So our goals for that space are to, to match what's going on in the rest, to have a public space where people are drawn in with both displays as well as services. To get from where we're at to where we want to be, there's going to be a growth period, and definitely one of the biggest challenges for us at this current stage is going to be staffing that space, and number two, now, funding that space. Our volunteer base is declining, which I don't think is any space where people are drawn in with both displays as well as services. To get from where we're at to where we want to be, there's going to be a growth period and definitely one of the biggest challenges for us at this current stage is going to be staffing that space and number two, now, funding that space. Our volunteer base is declining, which I don't think is any surprise, as most volunteer organizations around town have been having those same challenges. So the way forward that we see is actually to staff that space, be that at part-time at the beginning and to do something that's a little more full. Our goals as well is not to be a drain on the community. We're not here to ask for funding necessarily for staffing over the long term, however, that may be something as we investigate further that we do make a formal request and to put it out there to get us going. Our end goal is to be able to drive this archives in the manner of which other communities are doing and a lot of that is through grants and opportunities like that that exist. Unfortunately, in a short window, you can't fund an archive off of grants from not knowing that we're in the space to moving in initially. So I guess that's really where we're at. In moving in, it's been a wonderful experience, I think, as far as help from Terry Hammond especially in getting us into that space as far as access goes. There's certainly some bumps to work out, but I guess that's really where we're at.
Yeah. Well, what I'm concerned about is that the, as the whole Historical Society and as an offshoot, the archives has been developed by people that are interested and volunteers. I think it's too big, getting too big, to be dependent on entirely on willing but untrained workers. We do not, I've been around to put in all the museums the last few years and archives and they nearly all have at least part-time professional paid help, trained person. When Jerry Clare first took on the archives, he took it on when he retired as a full-time job. I went in with him. We both had library training and discovered that was useless and archives don't run that way. So we did a little bit of studying on our own, but it's got to the point where I do believe we have to look at a professional person at least part-time. And as an example, we were at, my wife and I were visiting at the museum archives in Peace River, a much smaller community. They have five people on city payroll for museum and I've outlined this in here, and archives. And I think the importance of archives is not just a matter of curiosity if somebody locally wants to find out something, but over the years, we've had actually people coming in from Scotland doing research and from Africa doing research. So an archive does serve an important function, not just locally, for local curiosity. And I think this is something that can't be decided today or tomorrow, but that needs to be on the financial agenda. First report I saw on the archives, we charge $500 a month for rent, is a lot cheaper than other organizations. I think the difference is that other organizations are there for the personal entertainment. I'm a member of the band, for example. I pay 200 bucks a year to be a band member, but it's for my entertainment. The archives I've been working at, it's not my entertainment. You see the difference? And I think the time has come when we need to get at least part-time professional guidance in that we have volunteer workers, willing, hard workers, intelligent, interested, but it takes more than intelligence and interest to run them efficiently. And I think it needs to be run more efficiently than we've been able to. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess we should open it up. Are there any questions as to our space?
So you're alluding to asks, but you're not actually asking. So if we're going to deal with this later on in mayor's business, we need to know if there is an ask or not an ask.
At this stage, I don't think we can, Cheryl. I mean, as far as costs and so forth go, the only cost that we currently are incurring, which we are at this stage not going to be paying, is the $500. And the reason for that just is we don't have a budget. We don't have any set schedule to go there. In January, when we were setting our budget up for this year, we didn't even know that we were in the space 100% yet. So as far as our archives budget goes, it was not set up for that. We did have a contingency fund set aside for being able to furnish and get things into that space, but as far as the rent goes, there was nothing budgeted because there was nothing ever in the plans prior to now. So I guess if there would be any ask, it would be toward that $500, toward K-PAC, because we realize that Terry's going to have challenges in managing that space.
Councillor Parzol. Just to reinforce some of the things that you've shared here, and with the vantage of my attendance at that meeting in Pioneer Village about this matter. My understanding, and this is just to bring council on board, because I have an advantaged point of being party to a lot of discussions, is that as it relates to the $500 a month and staffing, is you're suggesting that council see archival services as being an integral part of city affairs. It's not a club, it's not a community service club organization. It is to be, in your view, for archive, for the city to have archival services, it must come under the umbrella of the city. It cannot rely on volunteer, exclusively on a volunteer organization. That's the paradigm you'd like the city to entertain, is that correct?
Yeah, I believe that's spot on. I believe it's both an avenue to promote the city as well as a responsibility that a city of this size really should be having a more active role as far as getting the job done.
No, I just wanted to reinforce those, my understanding of what you're saying. The other thing is, and Walter, you've alluded to this as well, and this is true not just of the Historical Society, it's also true of other groups. Really the demographics of, in this case, the Historical Society are such that people who've done sterling work over the years are getting older and their capacity to do what they did in the past is no longer there. Without, I mean, that's just the aging process and there's a need to, for many organizations to find new blood, to be advised by the experts who we have in the community, but also if we don't, that still doesn't meet the need to fulfill in the full archival services as you see it. There has to be some professional help.
I see it in two ways. And one way is that we do have an aging volunteer base and one in which, you know, we can only focus on so many things at one time. The other avenue is that we've got this space where we can make what we've had into something even greater. And that next step is to go into an employment model of some manner where we have somebody that's, that is better trained than we can be, that is able to dedicate more time than we can dedicate. So that's really the two avenues, I guess, the decline in volunteer base as well as the avenue to be better.
Thank you. Councillor Schuman.
I want to be clear, you are not able to pay the rent at K-PAC? You won't be paying the rent at K-PAC? Just because I know she's got a bottom line too and...
Yeah, absolutely. And I've been talking with Terry about it. I mean, Terry had asked early on, when she'd mentioned the $500, well, that's quite reasonable for the space. If you're looking at rent for space, I mean, it's a gorgeous space, $500 is really quite reasonable, but when it comes down to the history of things, that was never budgeted for, so at this time, we don't have the ability to. It's not within budget. Now, that is certainly something that we're going to be discussing at our first meetings, is how do we get there? But we're not there as far as paying $500 currently. I do see in the future being able to contribute that money, if that's what she sees as necessary to be able to fund that space, but at this time no.
The major income for the Historical Society is the rent from tourism using the central office and the, at the museums, at the museum. That's basically our income. You look at archives, for example, same as you get a public library, it is not a fundraising institution. We did have a system of collecting some money when people came in for services, like photocopying and so on. They're paid for the expenses, but there are other expenses as well. For example, you can't just stick stuff into envelopes you pick up at the dollar store. You need special kinds of papers, otherwise the stuff deteriorates very quickly. So there are these expenses that go with it and some ways of paying for them. Historical Society has paid for a lot of the material that we have there. We have some donations from organizations, for example, the Block News, well, it used to be the Block News, bought a whole set of shelves for us to store many years of back issues of the paper. There were other donations that had been from organizations that we collected, but it needs to get past that. What other organizations do, like in Grand Prairie, the museum, although the archives and the museum share the same buildings, they have separate organizations. There's a board similar to, here we have the library board, which advises and studies with them, but they have a paid curator. I've met her several times and discussed issues with her. As I said, in Peace River, there also is a part-time technician to make sure that the computer works, which is a major problem for us. I'm not a computer expert, I have trouble with my iPod. Anyway, this is, I think we've...
Councillor Morkinson, you had one more. You had one question.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just had a couple of questions, just maybe for my information, just some things that I'm thinking might help frame our discussion when we bring it back up again under mayor's business, I'm sure. You don't pay anything at the annex currently, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. It's, well, I'm not sure the way that's all structured. Do you have any, this may be off the top of your head and maybe unfair to ask, but do you have any idea what tourism pays to rent the museum right now? Is it a certain amount a month?
Yeah, yeah, they're on a monthly. We just increased them for the first time in 10 years. They're $850 currently, yes.
$50 a month?
$850 a month.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And our costs to fulfill that space are continuing to increase as well, which is a plumbing bill of $450 to change a toilet.
I do want to express my appreciation for the support that the council has given us. I mean, there's a new, at the museum, there's a new basement, there's a new roof, there's paint. Council has, the city has provided us with water, sewer, and power and all that sort of thing. So council has been supportive and we certainly are aware of that and appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely.
Councillor Morkinson?
And, sorry, just one more. It was only in late July that you said that you were made aware that you were going to have to pay a regular rent? Before that, your impression was that, was that it was going to be a, you know, similar deal to the annex?
Yeah, absolutely. Throughout our discussions, we'd always been under the impression that we were going to be under the same agreement that we were under, so.
Thank you.
So thank you. We appreciate the information, obviously, we appreciate, obviously, the work that has been done over the years and so we'll bring it back and bring it forward and, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Ellen.
May I add something?
Sure.
I just wanted to say that one of the important things about having a curator is that they have studied how to make decisions on what to keep. We all know how difficult that decision is to make with our own stuff, so when you're trying to keep community stuff, it's even more difficult.
Absolutely. Thank you. So I'd like to do the next, before we decide to break. So next up, we have Lynn in Cliff Washington regarding the Peace Country Roots Group. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and councillors. Basically, I'm just going to read you what, did everybody get a copy of my letter?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
So basically, that's my position and I would like to read it to you. We, the Peace Country Roots Group, are associated with the South Peace Historical Society. We have our own entity and executive. We are not a society, only a group. We occupy the small annex building closest to the museum for the past 17 years. We have fully appreciated having it available for our collection of books, microfilms, computers, and to hold meetings. I would like to thank the city for their support and at this time, I would like to maintain our current location. Over the years, we have kept an index of births, deaths, and marriages out of the local newspaper. We have kept a record of all the cemeteries in the area. Information on genealogy and displays at Coop Mall or the Mall for Heritage Day, displays in Alaska Highway House for the month of November for Remembrance Day, provided assistance to the city and library for answering queries of Dawson Creek's past and present residents, assisting in helping others to get started in genealogy, or using our resources for local information. We have now set up a webpage as the following: cemeteries, unregistered grave sites, obituaries, which we're still working on, it's about 70% online, and we are still working on the corrections and updates. I would like to thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? So thank you. We will, we appreciate the information. Obviously, the, it's always good to get the updates on the groups that are performing different functions or services within our community and so it's obviously valuable information. So we'll bring your request back to council and mayor's business. Sorry, Councillor Schuman, you got a question?
I just wanted to confirm that the request is to stay in the building area now?
Existing facility.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Do you want to move on or do you want to take a quick break? Quick break? So we'll take a five-minute recess break, please, get back to order. Our next delegation, we have Mr. Daniel Martin, who is here presenting in regards to, on behalf of the Dawson Creek Disc Golf Club, regarding a building of, proposing a disc golf course for the city. So welcome, Daniel.
Thank you. Good morning. This is the first time I've been to the city council meetings. And yeah, my name is Daniel Martin. I'm with the Dawson Creek Disc Golf Club and I'm a professional Disc Golf Association member and a member of the Disc Golf Course Designers Guild and I come from Vancouver Island. I just moved up here, so I'm really excited to be in Dawson Creek.
Welcome.
Thanks. And I have two asks for the city today. One ask is permission to and share existing parkland. Barbary Park off of 15th and Chamberlain, I would like to build a temporary course, a nine-hole course. And I would like the second ask to be funding and an 18-hole course, permanent professional course in Kin and Peace Park. And maybe I should preface a little bit to people who don't know what disc golf is. Disc golf is similar in golf in that you have a tee pad, you have a hole, but instead of a hole, it's a catching receptacle, like that. And about each hole is about one acre or less, depending on the course, and you try to complete the course in as few strokes as possible, kind of like golf. And frisbee golf, some people call it, the normal term is disc golf. And it's, why I'm proposing it to the city is because it has a very high benefit-to-cost ratio. It is very easy... It is very easy for anyone to start playing. It's free to minimal costs, ten-dollar disc, you can start playing. The benefit-to-cost ratio is very high and I believe the course fits very well, and disc golf in general fits very well, into the Parks and Recreation's master plan, which is creating an inclusive activity, creating an ability for people to, to utilize outdoor space, and especially in some areas, it's underutilized in Dawson Creek, so I believe that it's very good to get people out in, in the parks and utilize it. Another reason it fits well with the master plan for Dawson Creek is it, it's very inclusive, so find it, people from different economic backgrounds can play it, people from different physical fitness levels can play it, and people from different age backgrounds, right? It was on Vancouver Island, it was part of the B.C. Senior Games. It's also, I give my nephews discs and they're playing it in Saskatchewan now and it's very easy for kids to get into it, and unlike golf, the learning curve is not as high to, to do well. But just like any sport, right, if you're athletic, you're going to do better, but it's very, the learning curve is very easy to get into it. And, yeah, I gave you a proposal, I just, that's my final proposal. I handed it out to each member here and basically in it, I request, like the second ask, right, would be nineteen thousand dollars for a full professional course, but that would be maximum cost to the city and maintenance thereafter would be very minimal because the park is already groomed, the park is already maintained, and I believe that there's an added value to the city to have the course. And the best, the best proof of concept would be Grand Prairie, because Grand Prairie, they built their first course in 2012, the Grand Prairie Disc Golf Club got twenty-one thousand, and they're building their second course right now. City of Grand Prairie loves the disc golf in the parks because, A, the parks was underutilized and also it prevents, it helps prevent crime and loitering and gets more eyes in the parks to prevent illegal dumping and things like that. If you have any questions, I don't know.
Yeah, that's great.
I said it mostly in the proposal, I don't know what else to say here, so.
Thank you. That, no, I was very good.
Okay.
So, any questions for Daniel? Counselor Malkinson?
I suppose I have a few, Your Worship. Thank you, and thank you, Dan, for, for making your presentation. I appreciate it. There's just a, a few things that came to my mind as, as you were speaking, maybe I can just, you know, go off if you don't mind. You mentioned the, well, the minimal maintenance that'll be required after the initial part. Would there be any extra mowing that's required, any, any supervision out there or, well, gee, any, any other maintenance that you can think of, you know, that's a, a regular cost that would add to the capital ask that you have?
Fairways are required to be mowed less than probably the city of Dawson Creek is mowing the parks right now, so the only consideration would be to have an open dialogue with the arborists and possibly plant trees or remove some brush. That, that would be discussed with the arborists and the, and the Parks and Recreation Director. Planting some trees might be beneficial because it would create distinct fairways and would prevent the frisbees or the discs from flying onto the road or flying into other areas of the park where you don't want them to go. But the biggest thing is just vandalism, like everything. Some people try to like, they Sharpie the, the tee signs or, but the, the Disc Golf Club of Dawson Creek, they would, they would try to resolve that matter on themselves. We'll get out there and clean the signs if we can, and if we can't, we would act for the city for help if something's been vandalized too much, or we, we might, like if someone vandalized one of the baskets, like this is a temporary basket, the heavier ones are galvanized and they're a lot heavier, so the city, if one of the baskets is damaged, maybe a tree falls on it, the city, the club might ask the city for help to, to uproot it and to fix it and put it back in.
Yeah. And you, you mentioned, you know, your, your experience in Victoria and, you know, what you've, you've heard in Grand Prairie as well, them having, them having two courses while building a second one right now. What's, have you, what kind of an interest have you gauged in Dawson Creek for, for disc golf so far? I know you've only been in the-
Yeah.
You know, you just recently moved, but what, what's been your experience so far?
Well, I moved here in July and, like, within the first week, I see a whole, I saw a whole bunch of riggers and frackers out in the park throwing frisbees and it's very easy because a lot of people from outside Dawson Creek know what frisbee golf is and ultimate frisbee, so it's, and I've created a club, a Facebook page, I've already got twenty members. I just secured my fifth member to sign the constitution so that we can become an incorporated society. So it's kind of like one of those things, you build it, they will come and, or the chicken before the egg, right? But definitely, there's a lot of people in Fort St. John that are, that would come down to Dawson Creek and a lot of people from Grand Prairie would come as well, and once people started playing it, people coming down from Grand Prairie who've already established a club there, it would kind of be infectious, right? The number of tournaments being held in Canada has doubled in the last six years. The number of courses in the last ten years have risen by three hundred percent, so it's kind of one of those newer, well, it's been around for thirty years, but it's one of those newer sports that a lot of people especially will get into because it's, it's low cost, right? So it's very easy to jump into, so it's kind of those, you build it, they'll come, right?
Yeah.
And the club, the Dawson Creek Club would be willing to, like I said, I don't mind giving out discs to, to new players or lending them. Other cities, they rent out a disc for, for two dollars and they require a deposit, so it'll be fifteen-
Really?
Yeah, so it'll be fifteen dollars, and then when you give the disc back, the city would give the, the person thirteen dollars back. So if they didn't return it, well, they sold a disc for fifteen dollars. So it's very easy for people to jump into it, so.
Counselor Schuman?
So you're proposing the city run the-
No, no, I was, I was just saying-
That that happens in another-
In some cities, yeah, like where there's a community center by the course.
Okay.
Or there's a rec center, they'll actually have discs in there, people can go in and grab it, put a deposit down, but the, the club would be, like I said, the club would be lending out discs to new players, so it'd be very easy for people to jump into it.
Counselor Kenny?
The nineteen thousand dollars that, that you need, is that if it was to be cement pads for the tees?
Um, I would like to reduce the amount of concrete pads as much as possible.
Yeah.
Use existing pathways or you, and Grand Prairie, they don't have concrete pads. They use a metal marker disc implanted into the ground and that way the mower can go over it and it's, but concrete pads aren't a requirement, it's just that, especially in, if it gets wet and there's a lot more people that are playing it, down the line, concrete pads would be, would be safer, but concrete pads wouldn't be a requirement for the first little bit because it's not going to be a hundred people playing a day, so it's not going to get too muddy.
So the nineteen thousand is just to prep the tees then?
Well, the biggest-
For gravel or?
The biggest cost, I'm basing it off of Grand Prairie, the biggest cost would be the baskets.
Yeah.
Oh.
And also the, the baskets installation and the baskets themselves, because they have to be strong enough to withstand the winter and, and they're galvanized, right? So they're about four hundred dollars each plus installation. That, that's the single most, largest cost. And then the tee, in an area like Kin Peace Park, the reason why I wouldn't want to put a temporary one in there until I would have full funding is because in a multi-use facility like Peace Park, tee, signage is very important. You have to show signage where the hole is, you have to show signage, you know, saying this is a disc golf course, things like that. So signage is a big cost, the second biggest cost.
You know, there might be an opportunity, you know, for sponsorship opportunity, I'm thinking approaching the Rotary Clubs.
Yeah, Prince George, the Rotary Club sponsored them for their nine-hole course.
Yeah.
So the, the funding would be great, but I think once I would get city approval, the, the nineteen thousand dollars cost could be drastically reduced because I want to go to the Rotary Club in Canada, my company, who I work for, and also private sponsorships and corporate sponsorships like Grand Prairie uses. Grand Prairie, like me and my girlfriend Shawnee, we sponsored one of the holes in Grand Prairie's course, so four hundred dollars, you become a gold member, and they put your name on the sign by the walking path, so it's good, it's good advertisement, and so the cost, like I said, the maximum cost, I believe, would be nineteen thousand, but once I get a temporary course in, once the city approves the course construction in Peace Park, it's kind of like I get the snowball going and then when I go to corporate sponsors and private sponsors, I can get a lot more funding and reduce the cost to the city.
Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, thank you for the work you've been doing on this. It's totally impressive.
Thanks.
I saw this in Grand Prairie and I saw these objects and I thought they were some new type of feeder for deer.
[laughing]
But then I saw these signs and got excited, took some photographs, flipped them to Barry Reynard and say, have a look at this, because we're, I think everyone here is always looking for things we can possibly bring to the community that enhances, you know, the recreation and the quality of life here. The thing that, that also I liked was the fact that the possible location here is close to the Central Dawson Creek Secondary School, it's both campuses and, so have, have you approached the, the schools? Of course, it's difficult with me being on strike right now, have you had any dialogue with any of the PE teachers?
Uh, no, I haven't yet. I've been, I've been really busy working.
Yes.
But in Campbell River on the island there, they built a nine-hole course, a short nine-hole course right by their school. So, yeah, a lot of schools incorporate it into their PE program.
Yeah, I, that's exactly what I did see, see happening. So really, what you're saying is we have some nice park land here, it could be used more than it is right now. This is a one-shot, primarily a one-shot capital outlay that you could get sponsorships for or other partnerships involved, and you're asking for the temporary site at the park that you described, what was the name of that park?
Barbary Park is good because it's not being used by anybody else.
Right.
And I wouldn't want to build a temporary course in Kin Park unless there's a lot of signage, because it's a multi-use park, right?
Right, so temporary Barbary and then the more permanent at the Kin Park.
Yeah.
With the Peace Park. Okay, well, thank you.
Counselor Schuman?
So thanks for coming today. I had never heard of this and, wow, that's very interesting and I like the fact that, how you explain that you can just jump right in and I love that it could have some other uses for our parks, bring more people into our parks, so that's all great. I would, however, love to see, you know, if we were able to give you the use of the parks, I would love to see you come up with that money on your own.
Yeah, definitely, like I said, once I get appro, if I get approval, like I said, it'll be kind of like a snowball effect and hopefully I can get more outside funding.
I think you would very easily get outside funding, so I wish you luck in that.
Counselor Wilber?
I get to proudly say that the little girl from Hickson actually has heard of this because we put in an eighteen-hole course during our family reunion as a legacy project, so it's neat, Dawson Creek needs to catch up with Hickson. My question is though, so you're-
Front page.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So this temporary course in Barbary Park, if we, you know, well, that's going to come back later, but if you were able to do that, how would you roll out that temporary course as far as funding and that kind of stuff? What are you looking at doing there for temporary?
It would, it's just kind of like a proof of concept design would be in Barbary Park and it would, it would mirror Bear Creek course in Grand Prairie. They built it for like under five hundred dollars, so I would just be using my own, or the clubs, well, I am the club, but I would be using, I'd be using my own funding and to build it, I'd probably be putting either posts into the ground and when you hit it, it goes dong, right? So that's why they call it a tonal, or I would hang like a, some type of tonal target from a branch, for example, and so it just kind of, I like Barbary Park as a temporary course because no one, there's nobody using it, not even the dog walkers. I see the dog walkers just keep walking down Fifteenth Street, they don't even go into the green space, so I, I know that, you wouldn't need like a lot of signage to be safe because I don't see anybody else using the park.
Okay, and it would create awareness, I guess.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I want to kind of get it in before the frost and that way, come the spring, people have kind of heard of it, right? For, so that I can get that momentum going for Peace Park.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? So for me, two, two questions, winter and summer? Can you participate? Can you play?
Uh, yeah, the Grand Prairie, they, they play in the winter. They put tinsel on the discs, so then when it goes into the snow, the tinsel is sticking out of the snow and they can find the discs, and especially like a well-groomed park like Peace Park, it would, it would be possible, and I don't know, I haven't played in Dawson Creek in the wintertime from the island, so it's kind of, it's kind of mild there, but there's, they do-
Snowshoes.
Yeah, they, they have tournaments called Ice Bowl tournaments, so you might have to use snowshoes.
Fluorescent discs.
I have glow-in-the-dark discs too, so people play in the winter a lot with glow-in-the-dark discs.
For me, for me, the aspect of, and I've used this term in the past, our parks, I don't, I don't call them parks, they're lawns, right, for the most part. Parks are lawns, they're well-groomed, they're well-looked after, but to me, this is an excellent opportunity to be able to utilize the park for a healthy, easily affordable to anybody, and so there, there may be some partnership opportunities even with our friends from Northern Health who would look for those opportunities for a population health approach is one of their strategic priorities. So, anyway, I just, I just use that and I think it's a great initiative. Appreciate you taking the lead on it and we'll bring it back under Mayor's Business. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
You want these back, don't you, Bazil?
No, you can, those are yours.
Oh, no.
You can give them out, you can give them out, if you don't want them, you can give them out to a kid.
Yeah.
Are you sure, like?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think you should take mine.
Cool. So next up, we have item six six, we have Tracy, Tracy Stanki's here, representing the Dawson Creek Curling Club as a board member in regards to the Curling Club's financial plan. Daniel, thanks again.
Thank you.
Morning, Tracy.
You could. How you doing? You could. My ninety-six-year-old dad. So I think you guys all have our latest proposal, so I thought what I would do is just do kind of a quick overview of it and, because it's changed a bit, I guess, since our last, I wasn't here the last proposal, but things have changed a bit, so I want to do a quick overview and kind of tell you what our, our mission, I guess, moving forward is. We basically now, we've decided probably in the last few weeks here that, you know, we've come to the determination that we're not just occurring rink anymore and we can't be self-supported by just being an occurring rink. So we've decided that we're going to look at a lot of other avenues. One obviously was coming to the city here, but we feel that, and as you noticed, that I've changed our proposal, that we're just actually looking now for a, for a three-year ask for the utilities coverage so that we could basically get back on our feet. We think there's some, some really good opportunities out there. One that we came forth was selling our sheets of ice for advertising. It's a concept that actually our new, our new ice maker slash manager that we've hired, who actually starts today, brought forward to us and actually as of our proposal, since then, we've actually confirmed that we now have six of our eight sheets sold, which will net us a thousand dollars a year in extra income, so it's quite helpful.
A thousand dollars a sheet?
Yes, yeah. We sell them for, basically, your first year's cost is fifteen hundred dollars to pay for signage and ice paint, and then every year after that, the cost is just another two hundred dollars per sheet, so we charge another twelve hundred for each year after that, so our net each year is a thousand dollars. The other thing that we're trying to do is, we're trying to improve, improve our facilities so that we can raise more money with things like hosting weddings, having more events in our facilities. so that we can raise more money with things like hosting weddings, having more events in our facilities. So, actually, through the South Peas Waterman's Association, they just donated curtains to, so we can cover the outside area of our ice pad in the summertime. So, it creates a lot better atmosphere in there for people hosting weddings and other functions. The next pro, I guess, to add to that here in the future, our next, I guess, round of donations that we're going to be looking for from outside sources is to be able to buy table and chairs for that same area so that we can offer that as part of our rental agreement, I guess, when we rent these things out. That should help us to sell, to keep the facility busier in the summertime as well as we can probably start charging more rent than we currently do. So, hopefully, that will help offset our budget as well. And the last thing, I think, that we're really going to focus on, and I'm not going to put a figure to this, to what we think we can raise, but we have a year-end bond spiel, and we're going to change the theory and the thought behind that to be strictly a fundraiser for the Dawson Creek Curling Club. We feel that the Curling Club is a vital part of the city of Dawson Creek, and, you know, we're going to fight hard to keep it going. And, but it can't be just the focus on just being a curling rink anymore because our members just can't, can't support the costs that we have to run the facility now. So, other than that, I'm not sure what else to tell you.
Thanks. Tracy, Councillor Schuman?
So, the year-end bond spiel, what did the money go to previously?
Well, basically, it was just a, you know, it's a year-end fund spiel, right? It just went to general revenue if there was profit made on it, right? But we're looking at having it as, you know, there's, we're lucky in Dawson Creek right now because there's such a, the economy is so strong right now that, you know, last year, we were able to go out and raise twenty-some-eight thousand dollars on having our rocks reconditioned, right? So, we went out and did that. We're going to be raising money for a new ice scraper here in the future because it's getting pretty tired. We're working on that right now. So, you know, I guess, as far as declining memberships and stuff, which a lot of clubs and volunteers and stuff are facing, but on the upside of that is, is that the economy is so strong that you can go out and kind of make up that difference sometimes with just going out and asking for help. So, and I think the thing, the biggest thing that we find that with us asking just for a three-year deal to help the city help us with utilities is it keeps, it keeps us accountable as a club so that we don't just carry on status quo, and then, you know, five or six years later, now all of a sudden, we're, you know, we're needing more money or that type of thing, right? We feel that we can turn this around in three years. Part of the reason why we looked at three years, we're hoping to turn around and get us into the, into the black sooner than that. But, our goal is to replenish some of our cash reserves that have kind of depleted quite dramatically the last couple of years.
Further questions for Tracy? Councillor Parslal?
Yes, thank you. Tracy, did you, looking at your financials to 2019, you have a two-thousand-dollar increase in membership fees. Is that an increase in your hopeful recruiting of curlers? Or is it a change, incremental change to the fee?
Well, it's both, actually. You know, we're, I'm not going to probably sit here and tell you that we think that we can increase our membership, the quantity of our members drastically. We'll be quite happy, I think, if over the next few years, we can stay status quo. But we are definitely increasing our rates this year. So, we're hoping for this next year. You know, it depends. The problem is, is it's a slippery slope because if you raise your fees too high, then some people may stop curling, and which is kind of defeating the purpose of the whole thing. We already do subsidize our junior program quite a bit, which we're going to look at that as well. I think there's a perceived value, I think, out there that we've probably missed out on the last few years. If you go to a lot major, major centers, you'll find that to curl for a season is quite expensive, a lot more than it is here. Although, if you go around, we've done reviews on other local clubs, and we're fairly close in line to what they charge. And that's the problem is, is that a lot of, it's no different than Hockey Canada. A lot of the small rinks around the countryside, I mean, even right around the Dawson Creek area, we've had a lot of clubs that, you know, Bonanza and MacLeod, I don't think they have a rink out there anymore. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's getting tougher. So, but I think, I think we can turn around.
So, just if I may continue on the, so is it, am I right in assuming that the annual membership for an adult is three hundred a year?
It's two eighty right now.
Two eighty?
Yes, for a single night.
For a single night?
Yes.
And the curling season is about six months?
Yeah, we, we say that you're going to get about twenty-two games, twenty-two evenings.
Yeah.
Yeah, on a single day.
Okay.
Where we're really going to increase our fees is, there is some curlers that play on a second night. We're going to increase the fees quite a bit more on that night because right now, it's, we did the math, and you're paying about fourteen dollars an evening for a single night. And if you play a second night, it drops to about eight. So, eight dollars for a two-hour session of doing anything is, you know, it's unrealistic. It's too cheap, really.
Yes.
Right? Especially for the facility that we have to run to be able to supply that.
Yeah.
Any further questions for Tracy? Perfect. So, thank you, Tracy. We appreciate the update, we appreciate the information. Obviously, the value that, again, that all of our recreational programs provide to our community in terms of adding to that quality of life are not in question. For all of us, it's about the dough in terms of, how do we find our financial capacity to make it all work, right? So, we'll bring it back under Mayor's business. I appreciate you doing your presentation.
Thank you.
Item six point seven, we have Pam Sawyers and Bonnie Harper from Northern Health, and Megan Klitch from the Canadian Cancer Society in regards to the proposed tobacco bylaw. Good morning, welcome, ladies. We've got you back on the agenda this morning, so I told them this morning that, mistake, they weren't on today. I was giving them the old, you know.
And you didn't get cuffed?
I did. Frisbee golf. Good morning, welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much for having us. Bonnie Harper, Tobacco Reduction Coordinator for Northern Health. Megan Klitch, Health Promotion Coordinator for the Canadian Cancer Society. Pam Sawyers, who is our Tobacco Enforcement Officer with Northern Health. And I ran out after Daniel to give him my card and talk about our Imagine Grant so that we can do the support.
Whoa, good job.
We just would like to take an opportunity to commend council and all who are present here today for the support around the tobacco bylaw that is before us on this day. And we don't want to spend too much time talking. We want to spend our time being available to answer questions or to clarify any pieces of information that may need clarification from our last presentation.
Thank you. So, we certainly appreciate you back, obviously, in terms of the bylaws before council today, as a result of your presentation and information you gave to us earlier this year. And so, we appreciate you coming back today, and I'll open it up to council, Councillor Parslal?
Yes. Thank you. Maybe I've been around, spent too much time in court proceedings and lawyers and stuff, but I just wondered, looking at the bylaw, you don't have a definition of smoking. It just seemed to me that I couldn't find it. So, I'm not saying it's not there, but I certainly looked for it. So, what is your, what is your thoughts about that? Should there be a definition?
There is.
There is? Where is it? I looked.
Item Q in definitions.
Okay.
To inhale, exhale, and carry a lighted cigar, cigarette pipe, or other lighted smoking equipment that burns tobacco or other weed or substance, but does not include the carrying of lighted incense or other smoking equipment used solely for ceremonial religious purposes.
Thank you. I'm going to have to get it myself to read. Thank you. Sorry for the, I just couldn't find it.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Section two?
Yeah, it's item, item Q, in the definition section.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Councillor McFadden?
My question is about enforcement. I'm an on-again, off-again smoker. I'll smoke for two years, then I'll quit for two years and come back for two years, but, so, how do you enforce it? I mean, I'm sure there's a law in Bismarck, North Dakota, that says you can't tie your horse in front of the saloon for more than four hours. So, how do you enforce these old, these bylaws? I think your, last time you mentioned about signage, and people are actually pretty good. They'll, they'll respect that for the most part? Is that what you, is that my understanding?
Certainly. Our, our understanding and our experience from other municipalities has been that, as long as there's a certain amount of education in the community, and people understand the rationale behind the bylaw, they buy in. Most people want to follow the law. Most people will. Certainly, in for, you're going to have some complaints, and it's following up with those complaints. But most municipalities have found there's been no extra budget item, you know, for them in terms of enforcement.
And tobacco bylaw enforcement officer, is that what?
What do I do? No, I am the provincial enforcement officer for Northern Health. So, I regulate the sales to minors under age of nineteen.
So, you would check restaurants and lounges to make sure that there's nobody?
Sales to minors from.
Oh, make, just sales to minors, I see.
And workplace smoke issues.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Mollkinson?
Another, another bit in the, that's mentioned in the recommendation that we have in the report today is about campaign to, well, public education campaign with Northern Health, Northern Lights College. I'm wondering if there's any sort of a breakdown or any narrower idea on what, what exactly that education campaign is going to look like and what it's going to include? Maybe we could talk about that.
Did you want to speak to that, Brenda, or do you want us to?
Um, it's up to you. I can speak to that through your worship. We had a thought about the brochure that's attached to the agenda, to use that. The nursing program, I was going to speak with, I can't remember, La, yes, and see what their curriculum requires. And I believe they do need to provide a public forum to meet their curriculum requirements. So, that would be one item that they would need to include. Other items or other options would be going to door-to-door businesses with the pamphlet and explaining the reasons for the bylaw. Also, radio, newspaper, social media.
So, we'll do some education with the nursing students on Thursday. The three of us and Brenda will join their class and do that education. And it's a really, a really great partnership with the college that then they will go forth and do some of that education for the city.
Thank you. Further questions? So, obviously, for me, the, and Councillor McFadden talked about it a little bit, was the enforcement. And so, our bylaw enforcement is handled by a complaint-driven mechanism. We don't have the capacity within the organization or the community to deliver that focused enforcement in terms of as a widespread where we're out there doing it. So, that, and I'm going to pass that through to Jim. I'm assuming exactly the same process for us?
Well, that would be our official bylaw response. The bylaw does transfer some responsibilities to business owners, and so, you should be cognizant of that and careful about that, given your strategic priority around your relationship with business. Our smoking rates here are very high relative to some places where bylaws of this type have been put in seamlessly. And I don't think you should have the false expectation that telling Connie there's no smoking at the next year's fall fair and exhibition is going to go seamlessly. If that's your expectation, that education is going to conquer a lot. I really think you might be disappointed. We should expect that this will be a labor of years, not a labor of minutes.
Thank you. So, anyway, Councillor Parslal?
Just a comment to, not, just to add to what Jim said, the, there've been some difficulties at Rotary Lake for staff trying to, you know, enforce no smoking at Rotary Lake. And, but some of the dynamics there have been that other people have got involved and pointed out this, and so, it's sort of a bit of peer, not peer pressure, but community, social pressure. There were some concerns about the approach some citizens had to Mau Zero Park summer employment. But, last meeting, I talked about it with a couple of people, and they said that they'd observed adults getting involved, supporting staff. So, maybe through osmosis, something might happen at, to, to maybe say that, Jim might say something different in ten years' time.
Well, I mean, the concept behind these bylaws is actually all around that modeling of behavior. It is all targeted at future generations, really. You're, you're going to have widespread and pretty instantaneous acceptance of these bylaws around children. So, asking adults not to smoke while watching their child's Little League game is not going to be very controversial. Asking them not to smoke while at their own slow pitch game is going to be difficult. Asking them not to smoke at the Beer Garden at the Exhibition Association is not someplace I'm sending my bylaw enforcement officers. I'm telling you right now, I'm not doing that. That's work for armed people with stripes down their legs. The, that's just the way it is. You're going to have to have your successes where you can. You're going to have to have a forward focus about what can be accomplished over time in the future. But, unless you're gearing up and hiring me a ton of new bylaw enforcement officers, you need to keep your expectations modest in some areas of activity in the community.
Yes, I think we have that.
So, I want to just follow up, then. I just was doing a quick, areas of smoking prohibition, prohibition under part two, an item, so it lists the first nine retail, personal services, bank, hospital. In the definitions, it also lists the outdoor areas to which the public may be invited. But it says, under ten, all of those first operator obligations are the first nine establishments or public, or enclosed. And it says, "Any other buildings, structure, vehicle, place, or area that is fully or substantially enclosed." And so, I guess, my question is, does that assume, or is the assumption built into the bylaw that although it, under the definitions, it gives an outdoor, everything else, it seems to me, and I haven't gone through it in detail, but it's talking about enclosed structures or fully or substantially enclosed? And so, does that create the insinuation that it's just for enclosed structures?
That portion, this portion, which is about operator obligations, is talking about these kind of spots. There is also the whole other sections that are about, you know, your outdoor areas. If you look at your, if you look at your, further down, you'll see it's parks, it's playing fields, it's all sorts of other things as well. It's a very comprehensive bylaw.
Good, thank you. Any further questions? So, we appreciate the information and you guys in attendance today. And if there's no further questions, we're going to move to the conclusion of our bylaws, of which, bylaw eight-three, or item eight-three on our agenda, Smoking Regulation Bylaw Number 4240, is there for consideration for first and second readings.
Has it been moved and seconded already?
No, we're just moving that now. So, move, Councillor Kenny, seconded, Councillor Mollkinson, discussion.
Your worship. I believe, in addition to the bylaw that's under item eight point three, there's also a recommendation from staff to, you know, can, or begin work with Northern Health and Northern Lights College for a public education campaign. So, I'm sure that's.
As we're asking today for two readings plus the commencement of a educational program?
Right.
So, if we adopt the report, that'll take time.
Thank you. So, I'm assuming Councillor Kenny, you're fine with that? And Councillor Mollkinson, you're fine seconding that? Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Scary. Thank you. So, item, we're going to go back now under item nine is our mayor's business. Item four is the municipal coalition announcement. So, last week, we had the official announcement of the Northeast Regional Resource Municipalities Coalition. It's a coalition of all of the municipalities. It's a coalition of all of the municipalities in northeastern British Columbia, uh, with the exception of Hudson Hope who have yet to join, will be going to do a further, uh, presentation to the mayor council and, uh, Hudson Hope shortly. Uh, this coalition is about the resource planning and implications of resource planning for our communities individually as it relates to the entire region. Uh, with all of the, uh, aspects of resource development that we're all faced with and the implications of that coming in the future, uh, we believe with respect, and we've seen it with our community, with, uh, uh, infusion of this natural gas industry that's coming through, all of these resource development aspects are having significant impacts on us as it relates to the development of our communities and region and infrastructure, and infrastructure planning. And, you know, we're, I, I'll use the example, last week I got a call from a local business owner who's just constructed a net, a brand-new shop, brand-new facility. He's operating it, and it's a big shop, he's operating it under, with a generator for power and no phone, no internet. And so, to me, it's unfathomable that we are in a situation where there's that much demand on the development of our community for industry and residential development being placed because of those demands on those components that support us. And hydro is being one example, I'm not being critical of B C Hydro, I'm just saying that's a factor that they're, uh, being faced with. The decat line is, it's coming into our community, is a two-hundred-and-forty or three-hundred-and-forty kilovolt line that's coming into our community to supply power, and it's already fully subscribed. And now the second phase, and we'll get a presentation on this coming from, uh, Hydro about press, the Peace Region Electrification System, which is a five-year plan to double that again, and they're already worried about having the capacity to meet those needs. That planning that we need to ensure we're s- at the table with, with the province and with industry as it relates directly to our community and the growth and the future of our community for infrastructure, hydro, roads, social programs, health, education, all those components, we really need to make sure, I believe, that we're in that, uh, realm of, uh, being focused and, uh, disciplined about that planning process with industry and province. So that, uh, coalition, we've all, uh, passed and, uh, are partners in and moving forward, and so I'm hopeful that we see this evolve into a very strong, uh, presence for our region and our community as it relates to the demands of what we're faced with in the future. So we had that last week, I appreciate those councils, uh, members that were there joining us last week in the event, and, uh, very well received. Any questions? Um, I had a meeting last week with about eight business owners, and you know, it's funny how in this world of a small community, uh, you're getting involved in, uh, we wrote a letter in support of the temporary foreign worker issue that's being, changes being proposed and by the federal government, and we wrote a letter in support of that program a number of months back, but I got it, I was into Pizza Hut about a month ago, and young, you know, the young lady that manages it there and that, uh, she got ahold of me and talked about the impacts that's gonna happen to some of our businesses as a result of the changes to the temporary foreign worker program, and they're gonna lose four or five people, they got four or five people that are employed directly at Pizza Hut that are going home, back to the Philippines, because their, uh, worker permit is gonna expire, they aren't being renewed. So, um, I, I asked them to please let me know, kind of organize a session. I met with about six business owners last week, uh, Jim from Bonnie's Janitor, uh, Dan from Lawrence's Meats, the butcher block was there, uh, Sam from Sam's Kitchen and the end of the crate, Nat from, uh, Pizza Hut, uh, oh, Hugh from the Dollar Store, talking to each and every one of them about the serious concerns they have about the impacts of the changes to this foreign worker program, uh, as it relates directly and specifically to our businesses, community, and, you know, I, for me, that, uh, worker, uh, that's being, that worker capacity is being filled by the, uh, temporary foreign workers, and particularly the Filipino community, has risen to four or five hundred people in our community today. It's growing and growing and growing and filling a need. I, I used the example about, two years or three years ago, I was coming back from my cabinet when I was late one night, it was six o'clock, and I phoned home and I said, uh, yep, baby, I'm on my way home, don't worry about getting dinner, I'm gonna grab something quick on my way into town. I stop at A and W, it's five after six, the sign on the door said our store's closed due to a lack of staffing, hours are nine to six daily. It's unbelievable to me that we have a restaurant that's in the service sector like that that couldn't fill the workers and, and was closed, and so to me, we got a significant issue that could, you know, we're talking about the growth of some of these, uh, retail service sector that's coming into our community and already being significantly impacted as a result of, and the butcher block, to me, is an example of one that's been a sixty-year, seventy-year business in our community that utilizing the program and utilizing it in a way that's been very beneficial to providing that service at the retail as well as their, uh, meatpacking plant. So, anyway, so I've asked them to give me some feedback and some specific, uh, information, I'm gonna bring it back and I'm gonna send another letter to MP Zimmer and follow it up with him. Councilor Parson?
Yeah, good, glad you're doing that. I know this topic's been raised in other communities in the north, um, I'm wondering about leverage, is, uh, is this something, I know that Mayor Ackerman's been working at this as well, is this something for the mayor's coalition?
Yeah, absolutely, and I'm gonna do that, I think it's a great segue into that in terms of being, I was at, MP Zimmer's had an event in Fort St. John a week ago Friday, and it was, he had a Q and A at the end of the, you know, social event, and that was one of the big topics that was raised by a number of the business community up there as well, so I'm gonna reach out to Bob and then do, bring it back through to that. I think it's a good way to leverage the whole regional component to it. Councilor Wilber?
I just think it'd be important to reach out to the NCLGA too, because they're arranging to meet with Mr. Zimmer at UBCM, so maybe having that sixty-nine percent of landmass in the province of B C saying, you know, if this is, 'cause it's not just the northeast, it's throughout our province.
Yeah.
And I understand that the federal government's position on, they wanna hire Canadians first, but what they don't understand is nobody's rushing to our province to work at those businesses.
Yeah, there's some components, they put criteria around unemployment ratios and how the jobs are categorized, if they're high skilled, low skilled, or whatever, but it, it was an interesting conversation, and I was there for an hour with them, and so I've asked them to give that feedback back to me, I've got some, and then I'll put some specific, uh, I think it's better if we have some specific, real specific examples of how it's gonna impact local businesses in our community, then sometimes that's a real nice message to be able to deliver to our MP as well as to Minister Kenny.
There's another component, if I, to this possibly, and I would defer to Sue or Jim, who may know more about this, but I have heard that the security of, the availability of workforce is also stopping some businesses moving here, setting up business, um, I don't wanna mention the names of business, there's only two businesses I know of, but there may be more. So it isn't just the needs of our current, uh, service business sector, it's also those wanting to perhaps set up shop here, and they are concerned that the, the availability, I think they, they see themselves in the type of business they're in, needing this temporary foreign worker program to, to operate.
Jim from Bonnie's Taxi indicated he's had, he's turning down work, really good work right now, just because he doesn't have, uh, the number of workers required to be able to execute, to be able to deliver, so. Jim?
Yes, through your worship, uh, it's all part of a general labor shortage. Uh, so we have, um, uh, jobs at the lowest end of the wage scale, uh, that are going empty, uh, for lack of, uh, applicants, and the temporary foreign worker program is designed to meet that, but we also have very high-end jobs, uh, that are going begging because there's a lack of qualified people, and there's aspects of the temporary foreign worker program that are designed to meet that. Uh, the coalition's goal, as a group of municipalities here, is to have permanent residents doing those jobs. So, uh, the aspiration for, uh, the coalition is not that temporary foreign workers would keep coming in and out, but rather they'd become permanent members of the community, uh, contributors to your, uh, volunteer programs, to your vibrancy, uh, for all positions. Uh, the, the boom, uh, bust scenario is only a bust if you don't build a robust community while you have the need. So, yes, it's a, it's exactly the kind of issues the coalition are looking at.
Councilor Schuman?
Yeah, well, every time I hear this temporary foreign worker term, it, I think of what Jim just said, like, come on now, let's get them and let's make them, I'm sure they would love to be permanent citizens and permanent, permanent workers here.
The most common temporary foreign worker in Dawson Creek is a guy from Alberta living in a hotel, going out and doing instrumentation work. There's far more of them than there are folks from the Philippines working at Timhorns. We want them all to be permanent residents.
Exactly. So anyway, we'll keep, uh, we'll bring that back, and I'm gonna write an, I really wanna write another letter and reach out to MP Zimmer on behalf of this, it's a big issue, I think, for.
And I think he's supportive.
Absolutely, Bob's been, he's been outstanding.
I mean, I think even, you know, back in Ottawa, he's standing up and saying, you know, this is gonna affect my region in a big way, so.
Yeah, he's been good. Thank you. So next item I have is, I engaged Jim in a conversation for his, um, part of the organizational development of, uh, feedback mechanism for performance, uh, planning, and so I've, uh, Jim and, uh, to, got some information on a survey process called the Three Sixty, and the Three Sixty is a process in which, um, the employee or the manager would have a survey sent out to, um, his superior, or his manager, his boss, uh, his peers, and to those people who report to him. And it's a confidential mechanism in which you can gather, uh, constructive, uninhibited pos-, uh, feedback for the individual for their own, uh, performance development. And I was, uh, it was a, it was a structure we certainly used on a regular basis within ICBC, and it was a way in which we could help guide people to understand strengths and areas that required, uh, development, and part of the development for them is part of that performance review process. So Jim and I have had some conversation, I got some feedback, uh, and some, um, information, and he's followed it up, so Jim's gonna be the first of the organization, uh, to participate in it, and, uh, it's about a five-hundred-dollar, six-hundred-dollar process. We will, as so, we, as council will, hopefully, you guys will all, uh, participate in that process. It's a structured survey, so it's not something that, uh, is gonna take too, too much, uh, or too long to do, and then, uh, Jim will participate in it as well as his direct reports, and, uh, a report will be provided, and it's for Jim, it's not, uh, for, uh, anybody else. I know, and we hope to be able to have it, uh, flow through the organization. This is about, in my view, everybody deserves to be the best they can be, and I say that in the most positive way possible, that we wanna help people guide, uh, their own, everybody deserves to know how they're performing, and I think, see this as one tool in order to help, uh, the manager, uh, get that information, and so Jim's agreed to, uh, participate in it, and I don't know if you wanna add any more to that.
So just the reason the mayor's bringing this up is that sometime this week, the consultant will be reaching out to you with a series of survey questions, uh, and, uh, so the, as I understand the process, the, um, responses from council are going to be gathered, uh, consolidated and given to the mayor, uh, so, um, the, both the mayor and I urge you to fill out those surveys with the consultant.
Completely confidential in terms of the feedback and how it's, and it's just used as a tool to help guide, uh, that performance feedback, so I think it's a healthy, uh, communication tool for people and, so I'm happy to see it, uh, moving forward. So I wanted to give you guys a heads up when it was coming. Thank you. Um, next item I wanna bring back is the Frisbee Golf, the gentleman from, Daniel from, uh, the Frisbee Golf, and we have a request, uh, from him to first use the, set up a temporary, uh, facility and use of the parks, and, um, then the budget request. Councilor Parson?
Do I, I'd like to move that we grant the temporary use of the Barbary Park for, um, as per the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Second, Councilor Kenny, discussion? Councilor Schuman?
Should we include in that something about perhaps working with staff to look at the Peace Park, um, idea also, so that, um, the proponent has some idea of whether or not he would be able to set up a permanent one, thus begin his fundraising, because I would hopefully want him to raise that funds without pers- participation bias, and I would think that he would sorta need to have an idea of whether or not he was gonna get that.
Jim?
Uh, so through your worship, um, it's not just the physical, uh, infrastructure. Issues you're gonna confront, um, compatibility with the neighbors, so are the folks living adjacent to Barbary Park gonna be fussy about this or not? Uh, they've had a ball diamond there which has been in disuse since the, uh, minor female ball program closed about three years ago, there hasn't been a single activity on Barbary Field, uh, so they may well have got used to not having a bunch of activity. Uh, when Barbary was active, we had a bunch of issues around parking, because there's a laneway there that has no parking in it and can't be obstructed, but yet it was obstructed all the time by parking, there's really no parking on Fifteenth Street, so parking's gonna be an issue. Washrooms are an issue. When Barbary's active, we put a temporary washroom in there. Certainly, our, uh, experience at Skateboard Park has been, if you don't provide a washroom, uh, people will find a washroom, and it will be a neighboring building. Uh, those are issues, they're all issues, noise, hours, we haven't set any parameters or, there's a lot of issues. It would not normally be good practice for council to take a single presentation for somebody asking for the establishment of new physical infrastructure in a park without asking staff to work through it, to give you a report.
Yeah.
Canvas the issues, insurance, I don't even know what the insurance issue is on this.
We need a report.
I understand it was a really nice presentation, and I love your enthusiasm.
We want that.
However.
Oh, Mr..
The, the, uh, whereas I sympathize with the goal of getting a temporary, uh, park out there for the remaining two months, and.
That's questionable.
November and December in Dawson Creek are not the same as November and December in Campbell River, and nobody's going to play Frisbee Golf here at Forty Below with the wind howling out of the west. You know, you might, in preference, suggest that staff work with, uh, the proponent and that we bring you a report in your budget process. Really, um, uh, if you wish to go ahead with the pilot project, that's okay too, just be aware that some of these issues will come up and we won't have an answer for you on them.
Okay, thank you. Co- council, so this, does that, um, change the motion for you?
Just a comment, if I.
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
Concerning Counselor Schuman's things, I, I assume that you had, we're going to be bringing forward those matters, so, I mean, they do need to be taken care of, and I thought you were just piecemealing it into bite-sized chunks, am I correct, or?
Yeah, well, with Jim's information, it's probably, um, reflecting on that in terms of saying maybe we need to first, if we're gonna, um, at least get the, uh, temporary use for it, uh, in the next month or two, they can then pursue that with them to make sure that there, if there's any, if there's any no-go within there, then they can bring that back to us, otherwise we do a temporary and then explore the more permanency of the report from administration on, um, what the issues will be for us to, uh, allow the go-ahead if that's what we do.
If you do allow the temporary one right now, it will help surface some of these issues. Um, you know, uh, maybe it would've been nicer to knock on the doors of those people and tell them this was gonna happen, but another way is just to have it happen and see if, if they complain, so, um, it depends on the success of it.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? If it's, um, if it's the proponent and the twenty members of his club, um, it's not gonna cause too many ripples. If it, uh, is, um, a nice, affordable, healthy alternative, uh, that's widely used like the skate park, skateboard park is, it brings its own issues.
So it's, it's all right if we do that, move it forward with temporary use, and we'll bring back a report from administration covering off the issues of moving it forward on a permanent basis.
Yeah, I definitely believe in the staff reports component, but I, I also believe sometimes you need to, uh, seize the opportunity, so I would like to move that we grant temporary use, because essentially just a frisbee.
It's only got six weeks and he's gonna use it for temporary.
And, uh, we have, refer the matter back to staff for report and budget implications and legalese and washrooms, et cetera, all valid points that Jim has raised.
Okay, thank you. Second, you, Councilor, uh, Councilor Malkinson?
Just, uh, just a question here, some, some of these concerns that, uh, Jim has identified, um, maybe issues for a permanent park, would they, uh, need to be considered for even a temporary park, like mowing and things like that? Are we making a decision on that right now?
Just at the moment, the grass isn't growing, so. I don't think that's an issue, I'm gonna have to canvass out on the insurance issue, we're gonna have to, uh, make sure that our policy acknowledges that that activity is there, 'cause it's an unsupervised activity, and, um, you know, we, in the skateboard culture, there is an ethos that says, you don't sue the city, uh, which is a good thing, because we know that people are injured at the skateboard park, none of whom sue the city.
I know.
I don't know if the ethos is the same at Frisbee Golf, I don't know if that's the. the case. And, um, I do know that, um, you have, um, so when you're designing playground equipment, choking hazard is the last thing you put up. You just saw his goals with hanging, that's, I have to tell you, that's a classic choking hazard. Um, I just don't know, uh, any of these things. I just, this is a concept that's very familiar to the proponent, but not familiar to myself.
Okay.
Counselor Wilber?
Uh, well, just, I, pardon what Jim just said there. The gentleman did say his temporary would not have the basket set up, so we have time to look into that. But I know with the skateboard park, um, it was worth the time to just go ask the neighbors what they thought and at least give them the forewarning it was coming. And they were actually very receptive. I mean, there was locations where people said, no, forget it. And, and, you know, that's why it ended up where it is. But at the same time, if, if maybe we ask the gentleman to just canvas that neighborhood ahead of time of putting in that temporary park, that they're, they've been given forewarning, and he knows what their reaction's going to be.
Sure. Counselor Malkinson?
Just, uh, just one last question, Your Worship. I am, you know, and hopefully, uh, Jim can have a bit of a response for me, but I, the only thing that I'm reluctant about, or the only quandary that I have right now is, uh, um, you know, the, the principle of all of this. You know, I realize that, you know, we're a agreement established for, you know, permanent use for the park there for Frisbee Golf, you know, then, you know, there's, you know, implications that, uh, that come along with that, you know, like, is it, uh, you know, the, the idea of it being a, a service that the city provides in perpetuity. Is, uh, us agreeing to a temporary use in the park going to, uh, proceed or influence any sort of, uh, report that we receive in the future, um, about, uh, what I just mentioned?
Uh, well, certainly it could in the direction of how popular it is or isn't. Um, obviously, if the temporary use proves very popular, that would be an influencing factor on, uh, whether you would wish to participate in a more permanent, um, use. Similarly, if there's issues of vandalism or, um, hazards revealed, and these are, these are all things that could influence a, a final report. In terms of, are you obligating yourself? Um, I did not understand, uh, the proponent to be saying that any of the fixtures being put in would be permanent for the temporary use.
The budget implications would mean moving it to the permanent purchase, the way I understood it, for the capital, for the baskets, and et cetera, so. This is a temporary use to
If we were funding that.
If we were going, yeah. If we're moving ahead with, we're not talking about that.
Yeah, we're not talking about that.
Well, you
'Cause he's gonna go fund it himself.
Uh, it's a nice juxtaposition, because you had a, uh, presentation from the Curling Club talking about their difficulty, uh, retaining members and recruiting youth members, uh, and their general lack of success to date in building membership. It's declining instead. Um, so that means that you are probably looking for, uh, recreational activities, especially for youth that have growth, uh, aspects to them. I'm hearing that this is a coming, um, uh, kind of activity, and that it has these benefits of being extremely low cost, uh, but still an outdoor activity. So, um, you know, these are the kind of things that you will be wishing to look for, uh, as traditional activities decline. So, uh, you know, it's nice that the proponents come forward. That doesn't in any way mean that I don't have a bunch of concerns that I need to answer off for you.
Yeah. Counselor Parslow?
Yeah. So notwithstanding the concerns that do have to be addressed in the permanent, I mean, I have played frisbee and hitting objects with my grandchildren in the park just up 17th Street on the left there. Essentially, the temporary thing, as I understood him to say, things would be hanging, that make a noise, and, so it's a game that's already essentially been played by some of us, uh, on occasion. Uh, so I don't see it as being something dread, dreadfully new, but the permanent stuff, I, I'm with Jim on that for sure.
Thank you. Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Uh, next item is the, um, Curling Club. And so we had a request from the Curling Club to consider a three-year, um, addition to allocating $31,000 annually for assistance to the Curling Club for their operating costs. Counselor Schuman?
Can I just, uh, question through to staff? The last time they were here, what was our decision? Were we, were we looking for more information?
Ask them for their financial plan, I think. Jim?
Um, so council had asked the last time what the Curling Club's plan, future plan was, not just a capital plan, but a recruitment and retention plan. Uh, council was interested in knowing whether what was being asked for was a, uh, permanent subsidy or a temporary, um, helping hand while other things occurred. Um, some, uh, the Curling Club presentation is responsive to some of that. They have indicated that it's a three-year ask now, after which they believe they will be on their own. Uh, wasn't much information provided to you about how they're going to, uh, grow membership. Uh, the statement was made that their members can't afford to pay this. Uh, so, um, that's a problematic assertion to myself. Uh, the adult fee is $280, uh, for, um, one night a week for what they say is 22 nights. Uh, the bowling lanes, which is a private competitor to them, operating in the same timeframe, it's 275 for one night, uh, for the length of the season. That bowling lanes charges that and then pays the city taxes. Um, the Curling Club wishes to charge that. They pay you no taxes, and they wish a subsidy for the, uh, utilities as well. So there is, um, uh, there is some question in my mind whether a bold statement that the members are unable to pay for the utilities, meaning $280 is the absolute max that an adult could pay. I didn't see, I didn't see the backup for that statement in the presentation.
Counselor Parslow?
Just to expand, uh, to the questions that Counselor Schuman's asked, um, what I was expecting before giving serious, uh, consideration of this request was a comprehensive strategic plan. Staff has given the Curling Club, uh, a lot of material that they accessed, and I was hoping that they would use that material and that we would get, you know, a sense of their, of what they're working towards, some goals, some measurables, and so on. This is, now certainly, I respect what the gentleman presented, but it, to me, it's insufficient. Um, and, uh, I think, uh, maybe it's because the curling season hasn't begun, uh, but I think there has to be some evidence to me of comprehensive strategic planning, you, and using the materials that staff have, uh, has accessed and presented to them. I, I didn't see any of that. So I'm very empathic towards it. Curling's a great game, I, and so on, but there are some, some things. If costs are increasing, then one standard way is a, develop some new strategies, and I think they're, they're considering that. I mean, I, I feel very positively in one sense, but I, I need to see something in a comprehensive three, five-year plan that is much more than what we've got.
Thank you. I need a motion?
I'm having it.
Counselor McFadden?
Well, I, uh, I real, I would, I'm gonna move towards granting their request. I realize the doors that opens with the golf course and the Curling Club, but, uh, it's a three-year commitment. Um, so to get it on the floor, I'll make the motion that we submit to their plans for, to pay the utilities for three years to a maximum of $31,000 a year.
Thank you. Do I have a second here? Counselor Kenny, discussion? Counselor Malkinson?
I can't, uh, I can't support that, Your Worship. I, uh, I really agree with Counselor Parslow's, uh, comments, and I think that, uh, you know, we did receive some, uh, good information today, but we need, uh, a road to sustainability. And, uh, I'm surprised that, um, you know, Counselor McFadden did, uh, recognize the doors that, uh, do open with the, uh, golf club and, uh, other bodies, should we, uh, go down this, uh, should we go down this road. I think that's a big, big, uh, consideration, a big, uh, well, it's a big concern for me. So I, I would, uh, vote against this one, or, uh, propose an amendment that, uh, achieves us, uh, seeing some, uh, some road to sustainability, some sort of, uh, more detailed, long-term plan that, uh, has some of these, uh, um, problems that have been identified, uh, being tackled. And, uh, and, uh, well, yeah, that's, that's about it.
Is that an amendment?
Is that an amendment?
Well, I, I think it'd be contrary to the intent of the motion, so we'd have to defeat this one.
'Cause you're, then saying you're supporting the motion, and you're making amendment to it, right?
Yeah.
Sorry, Jim, you want to?
Uh, just for the context of your current policies, your grant policy prohibits you contributing to operational expense. Your grant policy says you're not gonna make anybody dependent on you. So those that do get operational funding are classified as fee-for-service. The concept behind fee-for-service is it is a service that you would otherwise provide if the community group was not providing. So that's, uh, you would be, um, to provide this, it couldn't come, under your current policy, from grants. It would have to come from fee-for-service. Um, there is, of course, no budget in 2014 for that, so you would be talking about starting in 2015 as a fee-for-service.
Thank you.
With a $31,000 hole in your budget.
Thank you. Counselor Schuman?
I think Counselor Kenny is in front of me.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
My answer, it's unanswered. It's okay.
And, um, my, my point was that, um, I recognize they're in these dire streets at the moment. They've been making some plans, changing, uh, their philosophies a little bit, et cetera, et cetera. And I would more likely support a, a one-year, a one-year sort of bridge for them to try to get their sheep in a row, or ducks in a row, or whatever in a row. Um, but I, I would not be in favor of committing to three years.
Thank you. Counselor Kenny?
I, I like to curl. My husband curls, and, and I know a lot of people love to curl. And, um, and I, if, if we hadn't turned down Step Up &amp; Ride, I'd be like right here saying, yeah, support it for three years. But it's almost the same amount of money that Step Up &amp; Ride, uh, had come in and done a presentation, looking for a subsidy, and we turned them down. So I don't know how we can turn that down and, and give the Curling Club $31,000.
Thank you. Counselor Wilbur?
Well, one thing I did, they did mention that the South Peace Oilmen's had helped with curtains and stuff, so they are out there looking for sponsorship to cover some of these costs to initiate these new programs. So I think they have the ability, and I do concur with, um, Counselor Parslow. I would like to see a real in-depth, three-to-five-year plan of, of how they're gonna build that up. I mean, curling's is an important part of our community, but, um, where, where do we draw the line? And Sue's right, like, we've, you know, we just can't, it's not there to give. We, we, these people gotta look for some source, and it is out there. I know that I find money all the time for groups, and it, it's just out there, and they have to ask. So perhaps they're not asking the right area, but I think they have the capability of getting sponsorship and funding for what they need to build up, to hold these venues, and have some rental income come off. I'm not prepared to support paying utilities for three years.
Thank you. I also am speaking against the motion. I, um, think we're in a area where, um, there's so many, and it isn't a question of value to the organization or value to the, uh, events that they present and, uh, put on for our community and the healthy atmosphere that it creates from curling. It's about our own internal capacity at some point. We talk, we, we talk about consistently about our fiscal gap, and how do we ensure that we have the capacity to sustain ourselves in the long term. And to me, this isn't about whether we, uh, support it or not. We do support curling. We just, the financial component to it, to me, is just one of the, um, we have to, at some point, say we don't have the capacity in the long term to sustain it, and so on. From that perspective, I'm opposed to. Further discussion? You ready for the question and the motion? We support the, uh, three-year request. All those in favor? Opposed? It's defeated. So we'll
Can I make a
Sure.
motion?
Yep.
I'd like to, to move that, uh, council, uh, requests that the Curling Club make a thorough, a detailed strategic plan presentation using the materials produced by Curling Canada and other materials given to them by staff.
Thank you. Secretary Counselor Malkinson, discussion? Counselor Schuman?
So we just sorta indicated pretty, well, I, I can't say unanimous, but, um, we just indicated, um, our, um, that we're, we're not, you know, interested in providing this, this fee-for-service or, or whatever. So, um, where this, this thing you're asking for would be helpful to them, is it, is it gonna change our minds when they come back to us again? So do we really have the right to ask them for that, or?
Counselor Parslow?
I'm, uh, well, no, there, there's a process of reconsiderate, reconsideration. But my thinking here is that, um, there's, there's been, from people I, I really respect, I know there's some good materials available. I would like the Curling Club, I think the Curling Club is in, in a sense, an integral part of this town. I can't imagine Dawson Creek without curling. But with all the comments that the, the mayor has just stated, I'm 100% on side with this. I'm not saying that we will grant them, but I certainly would, uh, I think in the next two or three months, encourage them to do that, so that they can present us with that information. And it might lead us to, uh, them to realization that they can raise a significant part of it. And it might be something we can consider in our next budget deliberations. Um, you know, no doesn't mean permanent no. Uh, I, I think it's, uh, I think the council just made the right decision. Um, and I think the materials, I'm told, are, are good materials, that they should work through those materials. And given the attitude, I thought positive attitude from the presenter, uh, we might, uh, there might be a win-win that can come out of this. Uh, but I just don't see how we can consider, I don't wanna go into a new fiscal year with already a deficit in the, uh, in the fee-for-service stuff. And, uh, that comment that Counselor Kenny made is a, is a, a very telling comment as well.
Jim?
Uh, through your worship, the, I have the advantage of having seen these materials, so does Counselor Parslow, the rest of you have not. Uh, but they exactly would help you address an issue such as the one Counselor Kenny raised. Uh, nothing in the presentations to date have told you what the community benefit of a Curling Club is, so that you can compare that with the community benefit of something like Step Up &amp; Ride. Uh, but the materials that we're talking about, Counselor Parslow and myself, exactly help you do that. So this is information that could be persuasive to you if it was gathered, but it is quite a bit of work together, and so it puts some onus on them to do that.
Thank you. Do I have a second here for the motion?
No.
So, second, Counselor Schuman, sorry, I just
What's the motion?
Uh, that we, uh, asked the Curling Club to, uh, consider preparing a strategic plan with
Actually, that's from Counselor Malkinson, second.
Yeah.
Using the materials.
And using the materials provided to you.
All good.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Uh, we had a request from the Roots Group, uh, asking that, uh, they be allowed to continue the use of the current facility they're in. And before I ask for a motion, Jim, can you just give us a little bit of an overview of, uh, funding and how that works and what the
The, um, Roots Group are currently, uh, provided space in, uh, one of the annexed buildings to the elevator. Uh, and they're provided that at no choi, uh, no charge, and there is very minimal utility use or any of that sort of thing. They have keys, they access it whenever they want. Um, the concept we were operating on in provide, in sizing the space we did at the Calm Crook Center was that that group would move, uh, in conjunction with the Historical Society into the archive. Uh, on the other hand, um, at the moment, there is no precipitating factor that would require you to make the move. Um, that might be on the horizon. A building of that age at any time might require a major capital expenditure, and I couldn't recommend to you that you're making major capital expenditure to duplicate space. Um, certainly, if, uh, forward progress is made on, um, acquiring paid staff in some fashion for the Historical Society, particularly an archivist, you wouldn't want one set of historical records being handled by volunteers in a, in a non-climate control situation without professional expertise, and another set of records being handled with that expertise. So I think if that were to happen, uh, the thing that would make the most sense is you would get your bang for your buck, and they would be consolidated. For the time being, um, there's no particular reason to For the time being, there's no particular reason to force them to move. But I, just warning you, that that reason could happen at any time, given the age and state of the annexed building.
Thank you. Counselor Schuman?
So with that information from Jim, I would make the motion that we allow the Roots Organization to stay in their current venue up until such time as it doesn't work out anymore, and then we'll have to figure something else out.
So if we ask them to leave, sorry, before I go to, so if we ask them to relocate? Have we asked them to relocate?
We had made clear in discussions with the Historical Society that our aspiration was that the uses would be consolidated, ease of public access for the records, all regular hours that are going to be kept at the archive as opposed to sort of a phone call for service at the Roots Group. Yes, we had asked them if they would move. And that doesn't seem to be something they wish to do at the moment.
All right, well, then we'll provide that. We'll provide that direction. So I've got a motion. Sorry, Counsel Schuman?
I know that everybody doesn't like it's not specific enough, but until we know, like, when that building isn't available to them anymore, like, how can I be more specific?
If we've asked them to move, if the administration have asked them to move, we should give direction that we're allowing them to stay until such time as we can accommodate that any further.
It does, is that more specific?
Sorry, so I just want to, before I do, so I have a second here for that motion?
Sure, I'll second it.
Second it. Thanks, Counselar Parswell.
Okay.
I was going to get there eventually.
What I understand of the interface between the groups and so on is interesting. Some of the factors that might lead to us saying that this group has to move to where the Historical Society and archives are might be when the city's made some decision about archival services in the city. So there's one thing, right? The other is also the state of the building. So what I, I don't know if it's implicit, I think it maybe should be explicit in any motion, is that it could be on a month-to-month basis until such time as the city has determined the nature of archival services in the community and until determination has been made about the future of the facility.
So are you making my motion?
No.
I'm not...
He's not touching that motion.
I would say that it could be viewed as being implicit in the motion.
What we're saying is...
Maybe the implicit needs to be explicit. So I would be willing to make that as an amendment, or it could be a friendly amendment.
A friendly amendment.
Counselor Wilber?
Is there something missing, Jim?
No, you're just trying to set a trigger by which it will come back to you. So you've identified a couple of triggers by which it will come back.
State of the building and its decision about archives.
Counselor Wilber?
Charlie, bounce one off.
So the issue for us is that we will no longer allow them to stay in that building rent-free, but we can't say to them that they're going to have to go to the Historical Society if they choose to go to another location and continue on their work.
That's correct. But that's the, the Calvin-Crook Center's not a prison. I know, you've all wandered through it, there's no bars. It's, you're either there or you're not, but that's your choice whether you're there or not. What council chooses is whether you're going to provide additional public funds for you to have an alternative location.
Yeah, because my position is I just want to be clear that when it comes time that that building needs major upgrades or whatever, there is a home available for them to go to. So that's what our expectations would be. I would hate to give them false expectations that we were going to take on another capital project without when they have a place to go.
Clarity for everybody? Ready for the question?
What's our motion?
Sorry. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Is there anything we had in the request from the Historical Society that we need to decide today? They didn't come with a specific request, other than the issue of the $500 rent that they're obligated to. But Jim, maybe to you?
Through your worship, the, clearly, there are informative stages on the issues around an archivist and that sort of thing. What's in their face right now is that we have, by contract, given K-PAC the right to operate the Calvin-Crook Center and to assess fees to their tenants. And clearly, K-PAC has decided that in fairness, everyone will pay a fee. The Historical Society has indicated that they don't have a budget to pay that. But not necessarily that they won't establish a budget in future for that. So what we seem to have is a period of time, basically till the end of this year, that they are intending not to pay rent, and we don't know what K-PAC is intending to do if they don't pay rent. So perhaps you could kick that back to staff to explore that issue with K-PAC and the Historical Society. It may or may not be an issue that requires funding support from the city. That might not be where that discussion goes, I just don't know.
And there wasn't clarity from me there. So if we can do that, do we need a motion?
You would need a motion to drive.
Counselor Wilber?
I'll make the motion.
Second it. Counselor Schuman, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. And the last item...
Just an interjection, if I may.
Sure.
This presentation, obviously, there's the immediate issue around the, I'd probably call it rent. It may be an inappropriate word, but that's been covered off by this motion. Also, though, there was, and again, I stand to be corrected on this. I'm saying that they made a presentation about archival services. It wasn't detailed enough. It didn't, it gave a definition, you know, some definition stuff. So is this going to be part of that discussion through the first motion? In other words, the totality of their presentation? There are two parts, the $500 issue and archival services.
My understanding was they were going to come back to us with the archival services after they had plopped that around a little bit more, and I didn't get anything from the presentation.
Several times during the presentation, it appeared that Mr. Shane was ready, willing, and able to ask the city for that funding. And in each of those occasions, Mr. Bastianson deflected that to say that they were looking at grant opportunities and things like that. So I don't believe there was any ask, Counsel Schuman specifically asked them if there was an ask for archival service. And I don't recall getting one. I don't think the minutes reflect that there was.
So we'll see what they come back with, and then as we get into this fall with the rent issue, hopefully they'll come forward with their proposal for 2015 and beyond if they're looking for additional services. And I talked to Walter about that briefly at the end, and he said that's...
I think they're immediate, oh, sorry.
Counselor Wilber?
I'm just fine with Counselar Parswell being the liaison to those groups if maybe this suggestion can be made that they look at applying for some funding under the Heritage Grant, the federal government, with a birthday coming forward. It is the history of our community, so I believe they more than qualify to apply for some of that heritage funding.
It was actually interesting information about these other communities, and I have no idea how they are funding that. I'd be surprised. The Town of Peace River is funding five full-time staff for simply that purpose. Their total staff component's less than 40, so there must be other funding sources available of some kind. But I was also interested to realize that the only funding coming to the Historical Society is money that's being paid to them by the city of Dawson Creek through Tourism Dawson Creek. So keep in mind, you're already supporting the Dawson Creek Historical Society by paying that rent.
Counselar Parswell?
Just as a comment to add to what Jim said, Alberta comparisons is apples and oranges. The Alberta government supports the arts and historicals in a far more comprehensive and grander way than British Columbia does. So when they're using cross-border examples, there's, I believe, a lot of Alberta provincial money that goes in to support those things.
Okay, we'll flow that through. The last item, though, I went, we had, at the break, we did have an engagement with Day Roberts on the Legion, and informed him of the request, the Legion. He's indicated to us that there'd be no sense in them signing a contract, basically, because they don't have any dough. And so we're in the situation of...
No, well, actually, so the Legion no longer runs a canteen. So they have a single fundraiser in the course of the year, which is the poppy campaign. However, their commitment to the people who buy poppies is that that money is going to go for services for veterans.
For veterans.
Basically. So they would not consider it morally acceptable for them to take that money, which isn't a lot more than $8,000, and put it towards rent. So what Day is saying is in conscience, yes, he could move in, and he needs to, because the Curling Club exited them this morning. He needs to move into the space, he needs to sign the contract. If he signs it knowing he's not going to pay, that also doesn't meet Day's concept of ethical behavior. So he is asking if council, in some fashion, can waive that rental fee. I know there would be concerns because that's not, doesn't match your current policy. It also could potentially set a precedent. I'm just not aware of another group like the Legion. I don't know who could make the same moral arguments to you that the Legion can make to you and say, you gave the Legion free office and storage space, so you need to give it to us. They are a unique Canadian institution. There is no other group like the Legion. So I, in your deliberations, I don't think you have to worry about that precedent, because if there is a precedent, is some other group that is similarly held in the regard they're held, you'd probably want to support them as well. I'm just not aware of one.
And Jim's report was only one option available, and that's the policy that this council has with respect to the rates, fees, and charges that we would charge to them. So Counselar Parswell?
I am prepared to make a motion about this. The sentiments that staff just expressed are exactly mine. There's only one veterans' organization, and if we can't... So I'm going to make a motion, and Jim, feel free to interject if you... What I'm trying to say here is I'd like to see the policy amended to make exception to the veterans, to the Legion.
Right. We could amend the policy, specifically naming the Legion, but you still need to charge them a dollar, it's not a legal lease.
No, yeah.
I'm sure Day can afford it.
And, well, the second... I haven't finished, guys.
Let's fight over this one.
You better get it out, because somebody else is going to make it.
I asked him if he's going to make it.
Yeah, she did, she did. I've forgotten the second part now of all this.
Exuberance of a second.
Yeah, oh, yes. And that we grant, subject to this upcoming policy being accepted by council, access to the Legion until we've amended the policy and a contract be executed with the city. So in other words, Day and his group have a place to store this stuff immediately. Staff is authorized to do that. And then, when the policies come back and we've amended it, staff can execute a contract that Day can sign with integrity.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Kenny. Discussion?
We all second.
Everyone seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. So that gets through mayor's business, I think. Is that it? Did I have anything else? Any other delegations that I missed that I needed to do?
No, I don't think so.
Thank you. Calvin-Crook Center for the Arts Update?
So your worship, as you know, the official grand opening where politicians in suits got to say things to a gathered crowd, including the family, is over. The public open house is the 28th. And we urge as many members of the public as are curious about it, but are not using it. Anyone using it's already been in there to attend. At the committee of the whole meeting in October, we will be bringing you the final financials for the project. Mayor Bumstead has distributed the preliminary, preliminary final financials. But we'll give you the complete detail at the October meeting. And now we are moving from issues of capital project to issues of operations and maintenance, which you've just been dealing with on a couple of leases. So the idea that your issues are over at the Calvin-Crook Center is wrong, just like they aren't over at the arena, or the Curling Club, or any other building you own. But the capital project is concluded. The invoices are not all in, and that's why you don't have final figures now.
Thanks, Jim. Any questions? Consent calendar? Counselor Schuman?
Well, I wouldn't move that, but I have a question.
Go ahead.
Can I ask the question?
Sure.
The question is to Counsel Malkinson. I see this District of Taylor emergency resolution around the library training. Do you know offhand if our libraries, library is going to be affected by this community library training program that is being discontinued by the government?
I am not familiar with it, but I can get back to you a little later today.
Okay. So maybe if you can flip that to everyone, because we will be, if this hits the floor at UBCM, we will be...
I would expect that even if there's no direct effects to us, because our library might well have the resources to provide alternate training, we would still be affected because of the interlibrary relationships that are vital to us. It's, if there is a single public library with untrained staff in the province, it could potentially affect us.
Thank you. Anything further? I just want to raise one in item three from the letter from Connie in regards to the Exhibition Association. We had a great event. Looks like positive from every aspect of weather, participation, the execution of the event as a whole. So my congratulations to the Dawson Creek Exhibition Association and the rodeo. Connie makes mention in the letter about potentially moving the event up a date next year to November to host a outdoor concert. And so my concern is we spend 1.5 or 1.6 a year toward Encana Event Center for concerts. I want to make sure that we have that engagement with the Encana Event Center and the Exhibition Association as it relates to expanding that event at the fair and rodeo to leverage, I don't want it to see it impact our Encana Event Center concerts and the reputation of our concerts, because that's a significant issue to me in terms of our community. And I want to make sure that we don't see that go off the track. And I want, so Jim, is that a way that we can engage that conversation with Connie and the Exhibition Association, as well as with Ryan from the Encana Event Center?
Well, through your worship, what you'd hope is that there would be a synergy there that would work for everyone. Connie takes on an outdoor concert. The advantage she has is that she can potentially sell 500, 700 tickets more than would be available at maximum in the Encana Event Center. Plus, the expenses, building expenses wouldn't be there, so potentially there's more profit. There's a ton more risk, because it's an outdoor concert. The sudden windstorm, sudden rainstorm, any lightning in the area, all of a sudden, you've paid all the expense and you get none of the revenue. So hopefully, in that mix of potential benefit versus potential risk, there'd be something that worked for both the center and for Connie. But, and the last person in the world is going to guarantee you that I can make a deal with Connie, because I have a demonstrated track record for not reaching deals with Connie, so...
Counselar Parswell?
Yeah, I appreciate your sentiment on that, this matter, very much. You know, I appreciate very much the word that happens out there, led by Connie. But if there was a, this may not be a correct word, but a rainout, a torrential storm, and, you know, the risk is essential, is, would be tremendous in dollars. And I'm wondering who the fallback position might be there, you know? Would it be the city? I'm not saying that that would happen, but we know what happened, not this year, but the year before, with the rain that happened at that place and the costs associated with that. But really, I would expect that the city, the city has a real interest in this matter, and we should go into this empowering staff with the expectation that it has to be a win for us, and we would like it to be a win for them. But we're not, we're not going to be the bankers to this event. Should it have a disastrous rainout, and we would... rainout, and we would expect the utilization of the Encana Event Center for any concert at this time.
Yeah, for me, the issue is, one is they take the risk, and I understand the financial risk, but we also are kind of in there. But the aspect that we are in, our Encana Event Center is a national, international reputation as being a concert venue, and it's significant to me in terms of ensuring that that reputation in our community doesn't change as a result of, we've got a vested big-time interest in the Encana Event Center, our 1.5 or 1.6 million dollars a year in terms of whatever it is. We need to make sure that we don't make any mistakes in terms of impacting that, in my view. And so I just want to make sure there's clarity in that and how we move it forward. So I just raised it as an issue that maybe we need to engage some further conversation. Thanks. Counselor McFadden?
I don't think we can tell her what to do out there. We have a contract with her to run the fair, and she runs the fair. I don't know that we could tell her what not to have out there for events or venues. I don't know. I don't think we can.
Yeah, there's some arrangements around the Encana Event Center and how, and so on. I think those things need to be revisited.
Whatever. I just don't think. Good luck trying, anyway.
And it just needs, we just need to make sure that we're not on the hook in the end, too, right? Like, we can try to work with the group to encourage certain things, but we're not going to be left on the hook for any devastating events.
Financial loss.
Financial loss.
Thank you. Just a point for me.
Are we done?
Nope. We're still moving.
Are we?
Yeah.
We must need a break.
Do you want a five-minute break?
No.
No, sorry. Brenda?
Your Worship, we still need a motion to receive the consent calendar.
Oh, I should have the motion.
Move. And seconded. Moved by Wilbur, seconded by Schuman. Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Thank you, Brenda.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want a five-minute break, or do you want?
I want a five-minute break.
Okay.
What do we have next?
We have been two hours.
Now we have Committee of the Hall.
Well, Your Worship, you might want to get through.
Oh, yes.
Question and answer, like strategic priorities, question and answer, and then break before you go into the Committee of the Hall. It's scheduled at 1:00, but you're going to go into it whenever you get a chance, but the media might have questions for you first, and that's all.
Thank you.
Joe, any question and answer?
Well, strategic priorities first, Your Worship.
Oh, sorry.
So you can authorize striking number two from your strategic priorities. We have completed and opened the art center. Later today, you'll be talking about item four, where you may or may not be setting a course of action, but it would be hopeful that you are. So it can potentially come off. I will be bringing you the Plan B on fiscal gap, once I know what your decision is on Sure Water, because of course it makes a huge difference where you're going on that. And finally, you had an attempt at asking council to determine whether there's going to be an economic development strategy for the city or not, but that is your fifth strategic priority, is the council's going to decide whether to have such a thing or not, and you didn't do that today. So unless you're taking another run at the next meeting, then probably that item's going to be undetermined through the end of the year.
I think that we, from my perspective, this economic development discussion is moving forward to 2015. It can come on. Is that all right with the council?
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
For the correction.
Question and answer?
Nobody signed up, Your Worship, but I don't know about the media.
Okay. So can we go to the media now before Committee of the Hall, and that way if anybody does have anything? Or do you want to take a break? Are you guys going to hang around?
I've got to run at 1:00.
Okay.
Big stuff coming up.
We'll be done before 1:00.
Yeah, we're providing, we're providing free lunch for the media as well.
I wouldn't miss the Committee of the Hall this time.
Now, Matt Beans would never.
Big one. Okay, let's take a five-minute break, and we'll be done, we'll be done.
Wait, I mean, can we, me asking about what motions were approved, but on the Kiskatna watershed, it's now the city's position that they will push the province to officially designate that as a watershed?
We have written to them already, Johnny, in terms of requesting the minister and all the various ministries and the oil and gas commission for that designation, and it is working its way through. We haven't heard back from the Minister of Forestline and Natural Resources, and so that's what we're going to move forward with now to ask that, for that follow-up with him.
And the lease with the Legion for the new space, where was, I don't have the report from you, but where is that space?
At the, it's called, it's right next door to our old swimming pool, and it's in a building that's, was it daycare? And it's in that facility right there.
In that, which is essentially.
The old library is where.
The old regional library.
Okay. And what was ultimately, what was the motion there that was ultimately approved?
We're going to amend our policy and allow the Legion to be a specific designate under our policy for exemption to it, and once that comes back, that change in policy, then we'll enter into an agreement with the Legion to allow them to rent the space for $1 a year.
Okay. And for the smoking by law, that went through two readings, and you're moving forward on some sort of educational program, Northern Lights? Does that sound to you?
Yep.
Northern Health?
Through Northern Health.
Oh, Northern Health, College.
And then Northern.
Well, college partners as well in the education.
Both Northern Health and Northern Lights College.
And the Canadian Cancer Society.
And Canadian Cancer Society. Thank you, Brenda.
Curling Club, you are asking for a more detailed report, providing them with some more information, basically?
We've asked them to, we provided them with some information that would help them, lead them through a strategic planning process and exercise, and we've rejected their request for the additional $30,000 in funding for their utilities.
And just two more here. The South Peace Historical Society, was the decision ultimately made about the $500 rent and the archivists that they're requesting, or?
We've asked administration to go back and work with, engage with the Terry Hanlon at the Calvin-Crook Center for the Arts and work with Historical Society to understand the $500 a month per rent that they be, will be implemented on the South Peace Historical Society, and the archivist will work with them in terms of understanding what that specific request will be to consider for 2015 if they make that request of us.
And last but not least, the Frisbee Golf, you're basically going to allow him to use the park space, and at the same time, staff will prepare a report on what that would look like.
They're going to go through a temporary use for this fall to test it and work with, engage with the local neighbors, get feedback from them, as well as then staff will prepare a report to bring back to council on all of the ramifications of what it will entail for us in terms of how, if we wanted to move forward with permanency of the Frisbee Golf, what were some of the issues we need to consider?
All right, that should do it for me.
Thank you.
Mine's on Frisbee Golf, too. So I can't remember, is it Daniel, was it?
Daniel.
So you're giving him approval before going to neighbors and I guess dealing with some insurance issues?
So we're going to ask him to, we're going to give him temporary use, but we want him to engage the local neighbors in terms of letting them know and inform them of what's, he's going to be doing when they see these things out there participating. And at the same time, Jim will explore the issue. If there's anything within our liability coverage we should be aware of that either restricts it or prohibits it. And then at the same time, administration will review and bring back a report to council on the various issues we should be aware of and concerned with for moving forward on a permanent basis.
Okay. And for the Roots Group, am I correct in assuming that council intends to start charging out them for their space?
No. We're allowing them to stay in that space as they have, rent-free, until such time as a change occurs either within the structure that we can allow them to continue to use it, or some other factor that may require us to ask them to vacate it. There isn't anything in the immediacy that we anticipate, so we're going to allow them to stay there as they have, rent-free.
Okay. And the Legion's new space, you said it was an old, it was the old regional.
Regional library.
But is it also used as a daycare currently? Or that was?
Yes, the front half of the building is rented by a private daycare offering.
But it's just for their office. There's no canteen anymore, like there won't be drinking or.
It's to store their, store their belongings.
Their flags and their stuff.
Unless Day smuggled something in there.
They won't be having beverages there.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Jeremy? Good?
No, Mr. Mayor.
He's got it all on.
Thank you.
Clear.
Sharp as a tack. Good one. Good. Thank you, you guys. And so we'll have a five-minute break, and then we'll move back in.
Then we'll start in, and then at 12, lunch is arriving, and we'll break long enough to get that. We'll do the work on lunch for keeping the conversation going and the listening if the media stay for lunch.
Kick back into our meeting. And the next item under 14 is our Committee of the Hall, and the first item is our Sure Water. And Jim or Kevin, is there anything you guys want to say to this, to kick this off?
Well, we've attached to the item the final report off of this year's consultation process. That, of course, is a follow-up to the first year's consultation process, and, you know, there was a lot of insights gained through that process, a lot of information the public shared with you, a lot you shared with them. I think there's definitely, I know on the operational end, we have a far better understanding of our system than we have had, because the, the public raised issues that required investigation, and so the investigation was done, and there is just a much bigger knowledge base around the system. You've seen all of those reports over time as they've come forward. We, on a staff level, have been confronting a number of issues, not relative to the Sure Water discussion, but relative to the existing system and the bottlenecks in it and the limitations in it. So you've also seen those reports. There's a, there's a lot for council to consider.
So I want to kick it off because I have circulated my views on this to council, and as Jim indicated, I think we all have learned a ton about the water infrastructure in our community over the last couple of years, and certainly for me over the last year as I kind of got back into this. And so that first year of the pipeline discussion about supply, supply in terms of the concern for the community about, do we have the capacity of supply for the long-term development and growth of our community? And that drove, in my view, the discussion that took place and the momentum that was gained in the community by the supply question of, and that being a pipeline. So we're probably one of the few communities, cities, that isn't built beside a river or a lake, a large body of water, and so understandably, people have that concern about ensuring they've got the supply for water. It's one of those core foundational bits of infrastructure that we absolutely have to have. And so this year, participating in the Sure Water process about costing in terms of, okay, so if we have a supply to our community, how and what is that going to cost and costing implications that we provided? And then from their, the feedback from the community in terms of the parameters around that. So having read the survey results and as provided by administration in that report in terms of what the people who participated in it, it was in good participation in terms of the survey about the water supply and how and what people felt in terms of what they wanted and how and what they wanted to pay for it. And so to me, what I think now we need to do is, we've spent two years doing this understanding of our infrastructure, and I think about it in terms of three components that we have. And the supply at our, the headwaters of our watershed is the Bear Hole Lake, and then the Kiskatna watershed as it feeds into our pumping station at Eris on the Kiskatna River, and then feeds into the Hanson Reservoir, into the Hart Reservoir, into the Trail Reservoir, into our treatment plant, treating the water, and then feeding into our community. And so from my perspective, I don't, I think first, the first step we need to do in terms of our community is the treatment plant. I think we need to ensure that we have the adequate capacity of the treatment plant to, in order to meet the future needs of the growth and development of our community. And, you know, I was trying to think of an analogy of how you could, how people, you could explain this to people, and it kind of hit me at the rodeo, as I was watching the rodeo one afternoon, and the rodeo clown said to the announcer, and I forget, I don't know what the topic was, but he said, "That would be like trying to shove a wiener through a lifesaver." And to me, they, exactly the same thing. We had a 36-inch pipeline coming into our community. You still have the pinch point of your treatment plant. You can only still treat so much water, and you still only have the capacity to distribute so much of that water. And so from my perspective, the first thing that we need to do in terms of our project is the treatment plant. And instruct administration to come back with a project plan for us in terms of what that treatment plant needs to be increased to for the future capacity and growth and development of our community. And I don't know what that number is, but I think that's the first direction. The second one is then, as the infrastructure flows from the Hart Reservoir into the Trail Reservoir, and the Trail Reservoirs feed our treatment plant, if we increase the capacity of the treatment plant, we need to ensure we got the increased capacity of flow to the Trail Reservoirs from the Hart Reservoir to ensure we got adequate supply to the treatment plant. And so the second thing I think we need to do is, it's my understanding there's a 12-inch line that feeds the Trail, Hart Reservoir to the Trail Reservoirs? We need to twin that line. There's no sense in putting in another big one, but put in a line adequate for the supply of that reservoir to the Trail Reservoir that feed our treatment plant. And then the third component that I believe we need to do is to put a reservoir like we have at, just completed the Loran Reservoir and as our Park Hill Reservoir, to provide the fire flow protection of the development of our community as we see the development going to the east and to the south of our community. Because that's going to be developing. It is developing now, both with commercial, industrial, and we'll anticipate the residential. We need to ensure that we have the adequate capacity to provide the development of the community in that area of town with fire flow protection, and that requires us to put a reservoir in, and I think we filled it right up at the treatment plant on the east end of town to ensure that we have the capacity then with the infrastructure to provide that support. The funding, I think, has to, we need to provide that as well in terms of some direction. And from my perspective, last year we had $6.5 million approximately of fair share funding available from the fair share agreement, and half of it was going to our infrastructure, capital infrastructure programs. I think we instruct administration that we want half of that revenue from our fair share funding that's available over the next four or five years that I anticipate this project work will take, half of it be prioritized for the water. And in that way, we remove some of the pressures on rates that the community has faced over the last three or four years, as well as gives them the opportunity then to try to leverage and match either federal infrastructure grant funding and/or any provincial opportunities that may come as a result of that. And if we allocate it straight on rates, we may, we may not be able to qualify for the funding that's available through the federal infrastructure program, because if you have a reserve or if you have a method in which to pay for the infrastructure or the project, you don't qualify for the federal infrastructure grant. And so we need to explore that, I think. And so from my perspective, that's a parameter I'd like to place upon it. I think we will see the fair share revenue grow over the next five years as it has. So this year, it was, last year was 13 million with the development of fair share infrastructure in the region. It'll probably increase by another half a million or a million dollars this year for us, and depending on what happens with our budget. But whatever we have, I think we need to revisit the five-year capital plan and allocate and prioritize the fair share funding towards the water project to ensure that we have the fifth, the fourth bullet for me is, once we have those three projects in place, the final piece to it to me is the reservoir. And the land that was built, bought on the Hart, that's top of land, it's quarter section of land the city bought a number of years ago, we, the number I've heard from administration is it would be upwards of 20 or 25 million dollars to build a reservoir capable of providing that significant reserve for our community. And what I understand is the reserve capacity, if we develop that quarter section of land to a reservoir, would give us, based on today's consumption, upwards of 14 months' worth of storage capacity within the Hanson, the Hart, the Trail, and that reservoir. That completely removes drought resiliency as a topic of conversation for your community if you have 12 months' worth of storage within your reservoir system. I think the reason I think we need to focus on the fair share funding and prioritizing that is that we still don't have it renewed. We only have five years left in it. If it takes us three or four years to complete these first three projects, we need to be able to, I believe, have the capacity. we need to be able to, I believe, have the capacity within the rates for our water utility to fund that in the long term if we have to put twenty or twenty-five million dollars into it. But we also understand Bear Hole Lake much better today in terms of how it recharges our system and provides the supply to our system, as well as how it impacts and recharges itself for supply. And from that perspective, for me, I just believe this is the three first logical steps in terms of how we ensure long-term viability and water for our community in the next forever, whatever, years of future. It provides us with the reserve and supply question. And it provides a funding for our community in terms of some direction, in terms of how we need to and see it moving forward. And from that perspective, I'm absolutely engaged in understanding from administration, bringing us back a report on the funding component. But I believe the future of our community from the perspective of water, we need to do these three, three things specifically first. And I don't know what the timelines are. We haven't had any conversation about that. But I am making that by way of a motion right now.
Can we do that in the media though?
No, no, sorry. We've got to move it back to our regular meeting.
This is Committee of the Whole, so you would not be able to place a resolution on the table. The idea is that you have a wide-ranging discussion before you get to the point of a resolution.
Sure. So I'm making that in a motion in our regular meeting, but I wanted to give you guys a heads up on it. Counselor Schuman.
So I completely appreciate your comments. And I concur with your priorities and how I see water security happening for our community. The only thing I would add to it, and we're already working on it, is getting our designation for our watershed because, you know, without the watershed, if something happens out there and we need to be able to manage those risks or at least be privy to those risks. So I appreciate your comments. I concur. And let's get on with it.
Thank you. Counselor Malkinson.
Well, there's a lot involved in what you've said. I really, really thank you for the work that you've done. I'm sure the communication that you've had with staff, you know, identifying the, you know, different needs and the different strains. You know, we've encountered some in the last, in the last few months with some development that's been proposed. And I think that what's, you know, the issues that have manifested there definitely warrant our attention. And, you know, I think are our first priorities to respond to. And that's, you know, about issues about fire flow and about capacity. So those seem, seems very, very appropriate and I thank you for, you know, calling attention to that. The whole process, you know, as it began, as it began two years ago, I think, and, you know, the, all the work that has been done since that, since that point, you know, to create an understanding in the community, to look into various options that could be available to the city. It's really created a greater understanding, you know, of issues generally. You know, there's, there's issues with usage, you know, issues that we discussed earlier today about greater autonomy in our whole watershed, greater autonomy with Bear Hole. You know, they've provided opportunities and they've helped us get a little closer to being able to manage things more appropriately and to predict the future as well. And I, throughout this process, you know, as we've, you know, consulted with the public, had public meetings, and liaised with various groups and interests, my, the main concern that I've tried to keep in the back of my mind is a bit of guidance that I remember saying in a meeting, I believe, that we had with the village of Pous and the proponents of the pipeline in the first place and the City of Dawson Creek Council two years ago, shortly after we received the initial proposal. That was, you know, we want to, you know, the last time that significant upgrades or improvements that were made to the system, or the decision to make, to go to the piece, rather, was, you know, completed about fifty, sixty years ago. And that we'd wanted to have a plan in place by the end of this process that would help us achieving, that would help us achieve sustainability in that, or that similar amount of sustainability. And I really think that the process that we've gone through since then has achieved that in a, in a large way. You know, I believe that we're getting to that point right now. You know, it's, there's, there's way greater management opportunities that we have now. And there's, you know, upgrades that have happened since then. And there's all sorts of, you know, identifications of, you know, potential roads that we can go down. But most importantly, I think, we've got, we've identified a number of different, a number of different what-ifs, another, a number of things that could change, you know, the city's water needs dramatically in the future. You know, there are no, it may seem obvious, but there are no crystal balls, you know? And I think that the process that we've gone through has, you know, measured as much as, as much as we possibly can. You know, what we know, you know, the facts that, you know, the facts that we have in front of us, you know, the expectations that we have of the future. And I think it's the best measurement of how we're going to meet those demands. And it's a plan to get closer to that. So I just, I suppose I want to commend all that have been involved, you know, the public that have taken part and have largely, I think, understood the complexity of the process. And it's just, it's become a spectrum rather than just a, a single, a spectrum rather than a single issue. But I also have already thanked you for your words, Dale. I just, I just have specifically on, on what you've said. We've got treatment, the Hart, you know, doubling the line from the Hart to the Trail and twinning another portion of the line as well. And then eventually the reservoir as a priority. But now did I, I'm not certain whether I heard correctly what you had said there, that half of the non-operating fair share going to increases in the Water Sustainability Fund?
So I think we should prioritize the fair, whatever is available in the fair share funding available for capital over the next five years to focus it towards the water. So that at least that gives administration some understanding of how we anticipate funding these capital projects. It requires a review of our five-year capital plan in terms of some of the projects that may either have to come off or change as a result of that. But I want to at least give that as a bit of direction for administration to come back because now they can explore those funding opportunities that may exist with the provincial and federal government as well if we have that funding. So we just need to understand how we see the funding of the capital projects over the next five years. And I'm, I want to give that as direction to administration, rather than straight, strictly from the rates under the water utility. And there's only one twinning of the one line, Counselor Malkinson, it's just the Hart to the Trail Reservoirs.
And those, those three short-term recommendations are seen as, you know, priorities to respond to the, you know, short-term needs that we have right now related to, you know, fire flow and development?
Yeah, I don't know if even they're short-term because I don't know how, what the capacity would be in terms of project planning to be able to do them and in what sequence they would have to be done or could be done.
All of those items are projects that were identified in your water quality assurance plan and subsequently in the water system review that was done for the development cost charges. So they've been on the plate. It's just they've received no attention over the last couple of years because of the focus on the pipeline. So they're not newly created projects. They're projects being pulled forward from previous assessments. So the engineering cost estimates behind them will be stale dated, so we'll have to be updating that stuff for you.
Further comments? So, Counselor Malkinson?
I suppose we'll, we'll discuss it when, you know, we reconvene to the open meeting about the exact way that you've got it all framed.
Sorry, Brenda?
Lunch is ready.
Lunch is ready? Do you want to move to lunch and work?
Yeah.
We only got two items left and, oh, no, okay. No, we'll do that. Yeah.
Give people ten minutes to grab their lunch?
And then we'll come back and then go right through. I think it's huge opportunities for our community in the future in terms of available land and the size of which it is. And I think it will turn into a very important piece of property for us in the future. And so I think we need to have that conversation about our thoughts and views on it and be able to provide administration with some of that initial thought so that we can begin to proceed with any actions we may feel worthwhile. So Jim, well?
So it is always problematic to have an abandoned building of any kind in your community. It really matters now whether it's in private or public hands. If it is a decrepit boarded-up building with no use, it attracts undesirable activity and it's a nice offer. So there are some downtown, and we happen to have a couple, which are your next two items for discussion. One is the old Grandview School, formerly housing K-PAC, and the other is the old Centennial Pool. In the case of K-PAC, which is the old Grandview School, if you were to just take B.C. assessment's view of the world, we're in wonderful shape. They say the building's worth about a million and a half bucks and the land's worth three hundred and fifty thousand. And yes, if only such a sucker existed that we could sell them for that. What are two thousand and nine valuation? So keeping in mind, land prices have risen since two thousand and nine quite dramatically. But in two thousand and nine, the plant associates concluded that if there was hazardous material present, the value of the building and land was zero to less than zero. So then we went and had the hazardous material survey done in the building. And the good news is that there is no PCBs. But the bad news is there is lead in the paint, there is asbestos throughout, there's mercury. There's a number of things that will have to be, under legislation, removed prior to demolition. So it can't just be pushed over into a pile and all to the dump. That stuff has to happen first, which brings in, at least in two thousand and nine, the Fraser's belief that the demolition would exceed the value of the building and the land. Given the rise in land prices now, that's possibly not true, although the report was premised on the idea that you would rezone it to residential once it was vacant in order to maximize the value of the land. So we're just asking what you would like to do about this. I mean, your options are nothing and leave the decrepit and abandoned boarded-up building in the middle of a residential area. Another option would be to demolish it at taxpayer expense and reserve decision on what happens to the Bear Hole thereafter, to some future date, for instance, when you got a proposal that you found attractive. And the third would be to put out some kind of an RFP where people could respond with what they would do with the property if you gave them the property in return for them doing the demolition or, you know, if they would be willing to bid something in addition to the demolition. So those are kind of auctions for your consideration. And, you know, the demolition itself is going to be quite expensive because of the necessity to remove the hazardous materials first. But there's been some similar demolitions, whose school was demolished not that long ago. I don't know what that cost, but we could...
About four hundred and fifty.
So about four hundred and fifty a few years ago. So you're probably, a half a million dollars is probably a ballpark for just the demolition.
Thanks, Jim. Counselor Parzal?
Okay, I'd speak, I guess, or, I want to say something. But I think, if I may, ask staff if this comment I want to make is going to put the council in jeopardy. Should it be, should we go into incandium? So can I just have a word with Jim and then we can continue? Can I just speak to you just?
Sure. Does anybody else have any comments?
Apparently staff firings are on the table.
You know, for me, I think when I, when I look at that, I think the value for us in terms of having an available, a large piece of property for, honestly, if there was, Northern Health decided they wanted to provide and build additional, had the need for additional assisted living or residential care or whatever, that it's such a great location to me in terms of in that large tract of land. It's just, I think if our, the growth of our community, that particular area could have such an attractive location and potential just because of the size of it and the location of it. So anyway, that's why I just think it's something we bring forward.
The transit runs right past the stop sign, so to speak. So you're right about that. But I do see sort of their facilities kind of being further north and, and then quite a distance from medical services, et cetera, et cetera.
I just use that as an example. I guess I was thinking about it in terms of saying, even if it might be something that was looked upon as, somebody looking at as attractive for residential development or whatever, it's just, it's just got some real advantages to it.
My lips are sealed.
Okay.
So...
Yep.
So I like the idea of retaining that for what we deem as an attractive development there. But then, so that puts the onus on us to demolish it, which is quite a significant hit. So that's considered also.
Yeah, I think, to me, the aspect I think about is the whole component around, what's the value to our community in the long term? If we start to feel some of the demands around the future development of our community and wouldn't it be great to have some options like that size of property would do for us? And you could probably put it out to an RFP for somebody to do a joint venture with you. But I just think the value for us in the long term, having that available, has got some options for us. It could be very attractive. And I get the fact that you're going to spend a half a million or a million dollars on it. But to have that available for the future development of our community just is a really an attractive perspective for me. Counselor Parzal?
One of the concerns has always, has been around affordable housing and whether we get into leveraging something around that. I'm not sure where, if this is possible, but because the fact that we've got a building there and that makes it so, so much of a burden to use that as a, you know, sort of a land deal for affordable housing.
Yeah, I think you can't go to the provincial government without, in some cases, if you wanted to do a B.C. housing initiative or something like that, unless you've got something to come forward with and offer. And the land is the one advantage if you come forward with a proposal. And so affordable housing is another option, but we can't do anything without that. So anyway, it was just, for me, I think it's something that's got some real attractive benefits to the community for us in the development of the future. And I think, to me, we need to be thinking about that. If there's significant impacts to the development of our community coming at us, that could be one that really is an advantage to us. Counselor Schuman?
And we don't, we don't really have a land bank for which to make those deals. So I really like the idea also. But we do have to get rid of Grandview in order to go down that path, I think. I mean, we couldn't say, oh, we've got this great piece of land that you could put this great whatever on, but here we go, here's a half a million dollars' worth of demolition you have to do first.
Is it something, is it something our council would think about in terms of putting it in as part of our, as we're doing some capital planning and understand the implications for two thousand and fifteen?
Put it to our budget?
Put it to the budget, the capital planning exercise and...
Demolition of it?
Yeah.
I don't mind that.
I tend to, you know, I don't know what the discussion I had when I was out of the room, the request for proposal that would, that would see demolished, right? And might well mean in trade of land or, I don't know.
Yeah, we didn't really talk about it.
I can't see, if, if somebody else will do it, why would we use half a million dollars of our money? It'll be, because I'm, I'm just going to suggest that there's plenty of needs for whatever money we have.
I think Charlie, it was more, from my view, it's more about the, the aspect of leveraging that opportunity of having that location and that size of land available. If we had, right, if Northern Health came to us, we want to develop a residential care, so we have more need and we've got the funding. Like, we don't have the options of that today in terms of, so to me, that's the way I think about it in terms of leveraging that. And if we, if we, if we leverage it with somebody to, you tear it down for joint ownership, we're going to end up with a more development of what we've got going on. And we don't have the opportunity then to partner with affordable housing if we wanted to do that, or South Peace Community, Society for Community Living, or all of those agencies. I just think they, I worry about the fact that if we see significant growth, do we have the opportunity to leverage and partner with somebody? If we had a proposal come forward and we needed land to, good, good quality location and size of land to do that. Sue.
Well, I see if you, if you demoed the building and cleared the land, that, you know, in order to, the developer, you're going to pay those costs, they're, they're going to pay those costs for that half million that was used to, to, to do that. Like, we'll get, we'll get the money back. It's not like we're throwing it away, we'll get that money back when we sell the land.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Counselor Malkinson.
I don't know, can we, are there any sort of extra requirements that we'd have to adhere to demolishing the land? Could somebody else do it a little cheaper than we could demolishing it?
Not lawfully.
Counselor Wilber.
There's two lots, though, like through you to staff, like the bulb diamond and that is a separate parcel of land, isn't it, from the Grandview School?
And that parcel of land is a designated park.
Park space.
If it was going to be, so as a designated park, it may have attraction to a developer by virtue of its presence there. But it may just as well be that a developer feels the parcel is not, is not viable without the addition of the park. However, because it's a designated park, council could only sell it if you received the assent of the electors, so either by counter petition or referendum. So, you know, that's a significant limitation.
Right, so that's something I just think to keep in consideration going forward, right?
Yeah, I guess I'm just thinking about, I, I do, I just think about it from the perspective of the value of the land in the future for us of being a proponent. If something attractive came towards us that was a benefit to our community and we required land, we don't have a, a real prized piece that we could leverage, in my view, that I'm aware of.
The, the truth of the matter is on that building, as with abandoned schools throughout B.C., their method of construction, wood frame construction means that left abandoned, they deteriorate quite quickly. That building, which even in use is not a very attractive building, now that it has been buttoned up, winterized, and it's for cold storage only, the elements are going to get to that building and it's going to deteriorate. And you're not going to be spending capital money on repainting it or reciting it or re-roofing it. So this, it's going to move from an in the future concern to a right in your face concern in a not too distant timeframe. So you might want to be directing that we obtain an estimate for its demolition and get that into your five-year capital plan because I really don't see in five years from now, with no improvements put to it, it'll, it'll go beyond being an eyesore to being unsecured, basically. It'll be, anybody who wishes to can walk through it.
And we end up with, with the MIA coming in and saying, it's like our grants, you've got to get, you've got to do something with it, right? Counselor Wilber.
Do we have the ability to put it out there to say in exchange for demolition, we give a developer the land that, and we require 10% of their development is affordable housing? Do we have the ability to do something like that, to put out a request like that?
You certainly could. The question is, would you get any responses? The, so assessment, we seem to be, me to be wildly optimistic about the building value of 1.5. Land is worth 344 at 2014 prices. The demolition's 500,000, so, you know, a developer starts 150,000 in the hole and do they see enough value in that if they have to, if they have to have some non-market units? I don't know, you don't know where you put the RFP?
Counselor Schuman.
Have we looked at, and I'm not sure if we looked at deconstruction with regards to the Centennial Pool versus demolition? I noted in one of the reports with regards to tipping fees having almost doubled, et cetera, et cetera. Would there be savings in a deconstruction of that facility or the Centennial Pool differently than if it was demolition? It all goes to landfill?
Certainly not for Grandview School. It's maybe a different discussion about the Centennial Pool, but Grandview School is a wood frame construction. It's not salvageable because of, once you remove the hazardous paint and all of the rest of that stuff, you really have nothing left that has value.
Counselor McFadden.
Just reading the report, I don't see, what's the size of the property that would be involved immediately around the school? Not including the, the parkland or the, the park. How much, two or three acres?
Well, do you want acres or hectares, which makes you more comfortable? 5.87 acres or 2.376 hectares?
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Counselor Schuman.
I, I would be in favor of forwarding demolition to, to budget considerations and saving that land to use as a bank of land that we could possibly inspire some partnerships, maybe with the province or someone, to get us towards having some of these housing types that we do need now and will need.
Sure.
Is that a motion?
No, we can't make a motion, we're in the committee of the whole.
That's just what I'm in favor of.
You talk like another Southview type of facility?
Or, I mean, the talk has been for years that we need transitional housing, we need affordable housing, we need assisted living housing, we need, yeah. Those kind of things, right? The, the social housing that we may be able to partner with B.C. housing, but you've got to have a piece of land. And we don't really have a lot of that.
Well, the land we have is in the downtown area. We've had a couple of, we've gone quite a ways down the road, council has, with B.C. housing on a couple of projects. But in the end of the day, the downtown location was kind of a deal breaker.
Counselor Malkinson.
I just, I wonder if it's a business, you know, it's a decision point, you know? Is that a business that we want to be in, you know, is that the route that we want to head down? I'm not so certain, you know, it's a housing, you know, public housing or subsidized housing, I think, is accountability of the, of the province, you know? And I, I'm not certain how I feel, I suppose principally, about getting into that sort of a, a deal. The impression, or maybe what I intended to bring to the table regarding Grandview specifically today was about, you know, gathering some feedback from nearby residents and either having it, having the property expanded into a park or sold for residential or commercial or, I, I had heard the idea of seniors housing before, but I'm, again, I just mentioned the, the concerns I, I, I had before.
Thank you. Counselor Schuman.
Yeah, so we wouldn't be getting into that business. We would have the land, just as we donated the land down for the native senior's house, driver's house. You have the land, that's your part of the deal, you don't get into the business of, somebody like Spiggers would run it, B.C. Housing would fund it, da, 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 da. We wouldn't be involved in that deal, Duncan, we wouldn't be getting into the housing aspect.
We wouldn't be the landlord.
It would still be the province, it wouldn't be us. But we can't come to the table unless we have a piece of land that's attractive to them for such a project. So that's my thing.
Counselor Parsel.
No, that's exactly what I was trying to say.
So, yeah, we'll bring it back then into our regular meeting and try and provide some direction to administration. And the last one is similar, is Grandview, or the Centennial Pool. And obviously, this one's been on the city's agenda for a bit of time. And for me, this is different than the Grandview School because the property values and the availability of property in the downtown core are certainly different than I see them in, with the Grandview School. But at some point, we've got to come to grips with that empty facility and that building and make a decision in terms of, we don't want to get into the position of, okay, holy smokes, we've got to find a million bucks or a million five because it's been declared unsafe or hazard or whatever. I just think we need to have that conversation, so I wanted to bring it forward. Jim.
So your worship, the swimming pool, the good news is that because of its method of construction, it happens to have a tank. So that leaking roof just gathers water in the tank. As long as there's basically any structural integrity left in the, in the steel and concrete, the building's not going to get to that exterior look of decrepit that the wood frame building will. Bad news is the things that weren't present in Grandview School. In Grandview School, there was no mold discovered and there was no PCBs. But happily enough, there are both in the pool. So it's, it's an even more onerous task to remove all the hazardous stuff before demolition, and then it's a way harder building to demolish. When we put this out for tender once, our timing was good. We put it out at a time when there were a number of green credits available for one thing or another and at a time prior to the current regulations regarding hazardous waste disposal. And we got a very nice bid, about 250,000 for a decommissioning, which meant they were basically going to take it apart piece by piece and salvage the concrete and salvage the steel, and they weren't going to have to remediate the hazardous materials first. Council turned that down in order to provide a couple of years of opportunity for Peace Energy Co-op to explore refurbishing the building. Ultimately, they came back and said, their advice was it wasn't refurbishable, just like our advice had been. But in the meantime, we had lost that tender. So we have been tracking these decommission bids around the province and frankly, that business has disappeared. So although you could tender it with that as an option, because there is salvageable concrete certainly in that building and steel, we doubt if you'd get a responsive tender. People who have done that over the last couple of years haven't got responsive tenders. So notionally, this would be a harder building to demolish and so it will cost more than the estimates for the Grandview School. However, it's of a size and type that, once hazardous materials are removed, it is actually possible to demolish that building through the use of explosives, which is, well, seriously, it's a much cheaper method. However, if you try to demolish a wood frame building with explosives, you demolish the neighborhood instead of the building, whereas the concrete and steel buildings can be done in that fashion. So we can't say with certainty that your bid would be higher than the Grandview School, but we think it would be at least the same if you put it out to demolition. Both buildings are currently zoned public institutional. So if you freed this land up downtown, you would have, unless you're going to use it, you would most likely be entertaining offers for commercial or a fit with the downtown. The P1 zoning of Grandview, if that was vacant land and someone had, for instance, a proposal for institutional housing of one kind or another, assisted care, whatever, that qualifies under P1, so it wouldn't require a rezone. So probably you're looking for sure at a rezone in the swimming pool, but not necessarily at that.
Thanks, Jim. Counselor Schuman.
So in the past, when we've talked about the Centennial Pool property, there was certain, I, it was like past council, and talk about that property being a very attractive and important piece of property in our downtown core. And was there, like, talk about, you know, doing demo and then leasing it for long-term leasing instead of selling it? Or like, am I remembering incorrectly or?
Well, loathe as I am to bring this up, there, there was previous council with a previous liaison to the library board that was very covetous of that area to build a new library.
Oh, okay, I can remember that at least.
I don't believe that, although it's thrown around occasionally, your worship, I don't think that idea's avenue that the board is wanting to explore right now. Or I think they're turned off that idea.
Any further questions for Counselor Parsel?
Just a reflection about this, you know, seems to me that, I'm just wondering, staff's response to this. You know, both these projects we've been talking about, Grandview School and the Centennial Pool, are before us because of capital construction projects of the city, the Encanterie Events Center and the Carver Inc. Center for the Arts. And I'm just going back here to the presentation that I know Terry McFadden was at and I was at about the Australian system we've talked about a little bit. And I had the impression that when you're building a new project in Australia and you're to replace something, when you finance it, you're also budgeting for the demolition of this project you're replacing. Is that possible in, in, could a past council, for instance, I'm not getting into the rights and norms and, you know, 20, hindsight's perfect, but is it possible to do a sort of a capital project that includes in its expenditures the demolition of the whole building?
I would say if you can budget a project at 10 million and bring it in at 17.6, you can add as much expense. In terms of eligible project expenses, don't know, in the Canadian system, that's not eligible for grants from senior levels of government, that's it.
Capital, the capital, to me, the capital spend is, the five-year capital plan is our process. It's council's process that decides what goes in, what doesn't go in. And for me, these, this one, the Centennial Pool, is a good example of saying, we're not going to prioritize the dough because we're going to put it to paving or we're going to put it to sidewalks or we're going to put it to this or that. But they're not going to go away, they're, they're going to come at us. And so we should, I think, allocate, put it into our five-year capital plan and say, we're going to deal with them, we're going to address them. Counselor Schuman.
I like that, I think we have to deal with them also and, you know, somebody's going to have to deal with them. Maybe we can deal with Grandview first because it's going to be less resistant to falling down and becoming an aching mess.
Yeah, you're, just the risk analysis is going to move in ahead of this swimming pool. But actually, the projects that are going to be at the top of your list for next year for demolition are the fact that you're going to own at the end of this month, the old fireside restaurant and the old stone works building, the, the fire damaged buildings that were at one time the cabaret and the restaurant. And from a liability perspective, that's going to be a number one. On the other hand, because they're fire damaged, your hazardous materials regulations are completely different.
And, go ahead, Counselor Schuman.
Refresh my memory about how much it cost us to knock down those old hotels. I mean, obviously, it was a long time ago and.
I think the Dawson was around 350,000, but again, at that time, we had no obligation to first remove the hazardous materials, which, by the way, as you know, included all sorts of animal carcasses and stuff in the walls, but we didn't, that all just got pushed in and moved away. That was before a proper understanding of the danger that put on the workers who were doing it.
It's so interesting that it, even that recent in the past. It's so interesting that it was even that recent in the past.
So, yeah, so we, I, to me, I just think it's prudent for us. We, you know, we talked about it, the Grand, at the grandstands, when we got hit, 600,000 bucks, we gotta make a decision on. And so, to me, that's an example for us of saying, we gotta plan for this, and we gotta be proactive about how we're gonna deal with them for, on behalf of our community and not, and not create it as an emergency situation where it may cost us more just because we've decided to procrastinate and not deal with it. Okay, so we'll bring it back into our open meeting. So thank you. Good conversation, you guys. Appreciate that. So I'd like to reconvene to our open. Counselor Kenny?
Do you need a motion?
Do I need a motion? No. That's the mayor gets just to make that call.
Motion's to follow.
So the first one, I wanna make the motion is on our water, and I wanna provide the direction to our administration that we will first look to the water treatment plant as a first capital project for our water system, and have instruct administration to come back with a report outlining project components around capacity, what we would need to do to increase it, and what that would do for projection population-wise and capacity and all those. Second, I'd like to instruct the water line from the heart reservoir to the trail reservoirs to ensure we have sufficient flow from our reservoirs into the treatment plant to feed the treatment plant with the increased new capacities. And third, that we instruct them to come back with costing on a reservoir at the, up in the water treatment plant area for the supply of fire protection, fire flow to the west and south end of town. And I want to ask that we consider the fair share funding as the first core funding to leverage any other opportunities, but I'd ask administration to come back with a report outlining the options of proceeding on that basis. And fourth, no, so that's good.
Thank you. Schuman?
Counselor Wilbur? Discussion? Counselor Malkinson?
First is, I guess, on communication. We're reaching the end of this process. How will our response to that process be communicated with the public? Will it be, will it be, will it be any sort of end? You know, this is what you folks identified, and this is what we've considered and how we've responded.
Yes, certainly, I anticipate there's gonna be a fairly significant interest in the conversation and discussion. It's, we'll bring out a communication plan in terms of touching social media with our Facebook. We'll do the media, we'll bring back some components around that for us and communicating back out to the people that we're involved in and...
We'll, we'll, of course, get some more good advice from Jan Enns about that. Really, you're taking some action steps here, and so we'll be needing to outline that.
And we, I guess that segues into my next question. This is, we are making the decision on this right now, rather than receiving the report from staff and making a decision on, you know, your three proposals at that time?
No, we're giving them the instructions, that this is how we wanna move forward, and they'll come back with the project parameters, what can be done, how long, costing.
For instance, we'll need the advice of our engineers if some of those projects make sense to go together rather than separately tendered, that kind of thing. We'll get you cost estimates. We need to examine which of these pieces are in the basket that development cost charges help pay for and which are not. You know, we've gotta do a bunch of that sort of stuff. And of course, Charlie will want to try to convince you not to use fair share in the utilities, so all that'll come back.
We've got a water utility reserve as well. We've got some dough in there that we've been holding on to, not moving with, so there's, and that's why I think we've asked them to come back with that funding component and the implications to us on the funding.
Forgive me for continuing, but that was sort of my, my thought as well, you know, this, this idea of, you know, fair share being used and, you know, is my impression that the water utility was one that sort of paid itself. I, I'm sort of grappling with that, you know, in the wake of agreeing to it in principle right now.
Duncan, I'll explain to you why I think that the fair share funding should be used now, because we, we know what we got for fair share for the next five years. What we don't know is what happens to that if the memorandum of understanding or the agreement is changed. And so if we need to build that 20 or 25 or 30 million dollar reservoir, and if we don't allocate the cash from fair share to pay for these, and then have the water utility rates to pay for that reservoir in the future, but if we spent, if we don't allocate the fair share money towards this, use the rates, and then we don't have the fair share money in five years to pay for the reservoir and we need it, now we gotta impact rates again, so we gotta impact them twice. That's why I think it's more diligent to use the fair share funding today and have the rates out of the water utility in five years, because we may not have fair share in five years.
Very, very good points. I, I do agree with them a lot, but I just also, you know, wonder what other considerations come along with that, you know, what cost to our other priorities? You know, we have, you know, things outlined in our capital plan, and I just, I wonder if there's any implications that we're maybe not considering right now.
So, and I think that's why we're asking them to, because it's gonna require the five-year capital plan is gonna have to be revisited as it relates to this as core, this is, well, from my view, if I wasn't clear, this is the priority as a capital project for the next four or five years for our community.
We have, you haven't seen that stuff, because we have been spending a couple of years deciding, council has been deciding whether you're going to spend basically all of your available resourcing on a pipeline. And so there would be no point including, well, that was on the table, there was no point including any of the rest of this stuff, but that doesn't mean that the base information isn't there. As I say, that was all in existence before the pipeline proposal came forward, in your last, in your reports that you were getting through 2005, 2008.
Counselor Parzal?
Yes, this may be a bit of reiteration, but I appreciate your comments very much. But the way I see what we're doing here is, staff need some direction from council on all these three, these three points that I'm pleased that the mayor brought forward to this meeting. Now staff knows this is what we are hoping we can do. Staff will analyze that, give us feedback, may give us some counterargument.
Good, good.
But staff needs directions, so we, right now, we have engaged the public. I appreciate your comment, because to finish the loop, we must report, and I, I'm glad that we're gonna still use Jan Enn for consistency of style and her expertise. So I appreciate where you're coming from, but I, I think maybe you're jumping ahead too far in the process.
That's, that's exactly what I wanted to hear, Dale. I, yeah, 'cause sometimes setting a direction, it sort of influences the, the way the process or the reporting, you know, comes back as, and I, you know, there's a decision point in every, you know, at certain meetings, and, you know, sometimes it comes at a later point, so I, I agree to the, you know, the principles that are outlined in the general direction that we're heading in, and, you know, the reporting that we get back will, you know, rely us on the details.
If I may just make one last, the reason why I support the mayor's direction here is that, you know, when Kevin and our developer and all this stuff around our capacity to develop and the properties that lend themselves to, that are zoned for industrial development, light commercial, light industrial development, we needed to be able to provide that necessary water, that's an immediate, an immediate point. Because I think this opportunity of having more light industrial development, commercial development, is, we have to enable that, because that's an opportunity of strengthening our tax base, which needs to be strengthened. And so, these pinch points, and that's an expression I learned from Counselor Schuman, I never used that expression before, so it's now part of my language, right? Those pinch points have been addressed, capacity did for firefighting in this new area is being addressed, and I think we're in the right direction.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? You ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Carrie? Thank you, everybody. Grandview School? Counselor Schuman?
I would move that we forward the idea of demolition to our budget considerations. And, do I have to do anything with it?
No. We're just...
And then we, we decide later what we're doing with that land, so I'm just gonna decide on...
Secretary, Counselor Kenny? Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie? Thank you. And the Centennial Pool? Counselor Malkinson?
I move that we refer the question of demolition to our budget discussions, and I believe there's talk of a rezone as well, to, from P1 to a commercial or residential.
Yeah, I don't think that you need to address that at the moment, because you haven't made a determination about what the land might be used for. So if we can refer to capital plan, capital planning discussions and then future of that. Counselor Malkinson, Counselor Wilbur? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carrie? And media question period?
I'll just take you aside.
Okay. So everybody, I really appreciate you hanging in. This was a very, very fruitful meeting today, and really appreciate your consideration in terms of moving us forward for the community. I think today was the water discussion is a significant decision for our community. So a motion to adjourn?
Right here.